Okay, before we begin the meeting, I'd like to report out from our special meeting that a direction was given to staff. Okay, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Healdsburg. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we approve the agenda, I have a couple items to add. Under item two, city employee recognitions, we have two city employee recognitions today for Linda Colister and Jaime Lysia. With that, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, agenda's approved. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the August 7th, 2017 regular meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Okay, moving on to item number two. Now, under announcements and presentations, we have a certificate for Linda Colister for 10 years of service. Chief Boaz, would you like to take the mic?
I would. Thank you, Mayor McCaffrey, members of council, Jason Boaz, Fire Chief. I'm not going to do Linda Colister justice today, but I'm going to try to say a few nice things about her because she is one of the best employees we have. I want to thank her for 10 years of dedicated service as our Fire Marshal and Division Chief. And just to give some people in the audience an idea of what that means if they don't know, she oversees our entire Fire Prevention Division, which includes all the development review and plan checks for new construction and building. She also oversees the fire inspection program for all the businesses and schools in town, including all the hazardous materials programs because she is a hazardous materials specialist. And with respect to operations, she also responds as a chief officer, much like myself, to emergency incidents and commands emergency crews at scene, comes up with the tactics and strategy, and runs the incident. And then after it's all said and done, she's also a fire investigator, so she investigates the fires and is the investigator of record. So I just want to say it's really, really difficult in this day and age to find somebody who's that competent in both fire prevention and fire suppression operations. And we're very lucky to have Linda. She has an outstanding work ethic. She's one of the hardest working people I know, a positive attitude all the time. And perhaps most importantly, she really takes a lot of pride in the department and she really supports our staff and mentors our staff in a lot of different ways. So she just has an amazing skill set, and I think as a city, we're very lucky to have her as a Fire Marshal and Division Chief. Linda, come on up and thank you again for 10 wonderful years.
And I just want to say thank you, Mayor McCaffrey, City Council. And I just have to say, for 10 years, I hope that I helped make the city a little bit safer. And I just want to say I get to work with a bunch of great people in a beautiful city, and I have a great chief and a lot of support, and I work for the best fire department in the county, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Director Themig for a 10-year anniversary for Jaime Lysia.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So I'm here to celebrate Jaime Lysia's 10th anniversary here with the City of Healdsburg. Those of you know, I'm a transplant from Minnesota. When I got here in May of 2015, an individual came forward and said, hey, we'd like to do turf replacement at Rec Park, and we'd like to put in Bermuda grass. And I'm thinking, what the heck's Bermuda grass? So I looked to Mr. Lysia, our park superintendent, and he tells me all about it, and he's knowledgeable, and he's put that knowledge to work every day since I've gotten here, helping me learn everything that I need to know to make sure that he's successful and that we're successful. But one of the things that impresses me the most, have you ever ridden around with Jaime before? Well, he knows everybody in town, and so his hand is always up, and I'm thinking, maybe I'm going to get Jaime one of those little plastic hands that he can hang in the front of his truck because he's always waving at people. So Jaime is a true asset to the city. He has always been supportive of what we need to do and what the community needs, and he's just a pleasure to work with. So with that, Jaime, if you don't mind coming up, and I know his family's here as well.
I won't follow up, Linda, but I'll just say a few words. I'd like to thank Mark Themig for giving me the opportunity to be in a position where I can give back to the community that I lived most of my life. So thank you for that, Mark.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, we'll move on to item three. Council reports on matters of interest occurring since the previous regular meeting. Councilmember Gold?
Yes, well, as you know, I'm concerned about conversion of our housing stock to second homes, empty homes, being held for investment or for occasional use. I believe that in the sustainability report that we published in 2015, it stated that about 40% of housing sales at that time were not to people who were going to use it as a primary residence. And I think probably the rate is a lot higher by now. There's indications that it may be as high as 70% for new construction. So I don't have any gripe with people who want to have a second home in Healdsburg. It's very natural, and it's certainly a welcome as a segment of our community, but I think if it gets too far out of balance, then we have a problem. Because housing prices are high, availability is very limited for people who want to actually live here, and then you have these kind of hollowed-out neighborhoods. Because empty houses can't contribute to a community project, they don't send their children to school, they don't shop at local stores, and they can't lend a helping hand to a neighbor. So, as I mentioned at the last meeting, the council member of St. Helena mentioned that they are about 50% vacant at this time. And my concern is that that may be the future for Healdsburg if we don't try to do something about it. Some cities are using economic disincentives such as transfer tax or an annual tax. The City of Vancouver, B.C., is currently implementing a 1% annual tax on vacant homes. And if you want to find out more about what they're doing, it's easily found on the Internet. You just search on vacant home tax Vancouver. I spoke to their city finance director, and she was very helpful and informative about the process that they are currently going through. I believe San Francisco is also looking at making a similar effort. So what I'm going to suggest tonight is, I'm just going to request that if other council members are concerned about this, that we just take a look at what we might be able to do, what might be legal and permissible for us to do in the way of some sort of a second vacant home tax, some sort of economic disincentive that would also hopefully generate some much-needed funds to build affordable housing in Healdsburg.
So we're looking for a consensus among the council for exploring a vacant home tax or incentive to prevent second homes. We can't really discuss it, so the idea is, do we want to explore that, or do we not want to explore that? And so I'll just go ahead.
So I guess want to be clear, all we're asking is, do we want to see this item agendized or not? To your point, we want to be careful not to get too far into the discussion point.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing, a couple thoughts come to mind after I got your email is, you know, I have serious reservations about that, but I think it's important to discuss things. And I think, you know, I also have ideas on how to improve the affordable housing issue and how we can actually get local people into homes. And I think a more appropriate venue would be a discussion level at the Community Housing Committee. Maybe package this more as, you know, right now, the Housing Committee has four agenda items that they're discussing, they're reviewing. So maybe this is, it's agendized down the road, because I'm a firm believer, even though I may not agree with an issue, I think there's a reason there's five of us here, we should be discussing these things. And I would prefer to see that wrapped into maybe a, not a sole item on, okay, let's explore taxing second homes, but maybe put it in, you know, as additional discussion items for the Housing Committee, because we have great members there, and I think that would be the appropriate place. And whenever we do have this discussion, it could be, you know, there may be some ideas that come from the Housing Committee as well. So I mean, I don't have an issue discussing it, but I would rather re-categorize it to say it's going to be a discussion item as additional items as one potential option. Because I want to make sure we understand the problem before we start looking for solutions. Because, you know, I live in Parkland Farms. I don't have an issue of second homes and vacant homes or anything like that. We have, I counted today, I have 17 kids on my block. So I want to have the discussion, but I think it should be in the realm of additional ideas that we kind of vet, that we send to the Housing Committee to really nail in and discuss. So that's kind of my...
I want to make a suggestion here, and that is that, you know, all you're looking for right now is an understanding about whether or not you would like to have this on the agenda. And I actually think that to decide to kick this to the Housing Committee, you need to have this on the agenda. Because the Housing Committee's kind of charge is set by resolution passed by the council. So if you decide that you want to amend that, you need to bring it back to discuss. That's one reason. The other reason is, I think there are some significant legal issues that we will need to explore. And so it could be that after we've looked at those issues, that really shapes the conversation you have. And so I think that your protocols indicate that you need three council members to put something on the agenda. So I would suggest, in sort of interest of efficiency, but also in adhering to what's on the agenda for this meeting, that you simply see if you've got three council members who are interested in agendizing this item in the future, and then if so, we'll bring it back.
So with that, can I get a show of hands if council members don't want to have this agendized?
Can I amend your suggestion to say, be more specific about the agenda item? Namely, a direction to staff, well, help me. With this agenda, I would like to see the agenda being, what are the impacts of second homes, and how do we mitigate for those impacts? That, to me, would be a useful agenda item.
What are the impacts of second homes in our community, and what are our options, what are our legal options for mitigating those?
Yes, that would be, is that a fair...
So let me jump in, I'm sorry, City Attorney and Mayor, if I may. So we're getting into a discussion item about different things you'd like to see on the agenda. What I would suggest we do is go back to the original point, agendize this. At that point, we can receive further direction through the discussion that will be noticed and the public can weigh in on this item. At that point, if we want to expand the scope of it, we can do that. But as far as providing more direction on the agenda item itself, I feel like we're getting into a place now where we're actually discussing the item prior to it being agendized. But councilmember, I will take, we understand what your concerns are.
Can I get just a yes or no, whether you'd like to discuss second homes in the future?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you.
Point of order, what is near future? Is that next meeting?
No, will not be next meeting. Let me look at the agenda sheets, planning sheets, and now I can email council in the next few days as far as when it looks like this will be on the agenda.
Okay, matters of interest, Councilmember Hagley, would you like to take the next one?
Sure. Had a fairly busy last couple of weeks. On Wednesday, the 9th, I attended the NCRAM meeting down in Novato, and we actually voted to sponsor legislation to request funding to do some rail improvements. So it's basically a move that we had to make to start that process. Whether that actually goes all the way through is another issue, but it does have some interesting implications for us locally in terms of improving the tracks here going north. And then, let's see, on Thursday, the 10th, I attended the Mayor's and Council Members' Dinner, which was a very interesting meeting. And then on Tuesday, the 15th, I actually happened to be down in Beverly Hills for some business. And while I was down there, I reached out to a council member and city manager and had about a two-hour conversation with both of them. And just, it was interesting, kind of an extension of the conversations we have at the Mayor's and Council Member meetings and the League of California City meetings, where you get to exchange ideas, and it was pretty fascinating. They have 38,000 residents, and every day, that population grows to 250,000, just from people coming in to work and then go home. So it was pretty interesting listening to how they mitigate the issues that they have. So I encourage, anytime you're traveling on business or whatever, just call up a council member, and they're usually pretty open to having a conversation, grab coffee, and just kind of see, because you never know where you'll get ideas or inspiration, or, so that's about it. Thank you.
Councilmember Newyorkis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Briefly recap of some of the things that I've done. Sonoma County Transit, we met with Vice Mayor Mansell to talk about the state of our transit shuttle and system in general, and integration with SMART and some possibilities for the future. So that was very interesting. I also met with the Chamber of Commerce, my usual interaction with the chamber, to get their always candid feedback. And I'm sure we'll hear from them about parking. If not, I can certainly chime in with their input. I, too, would like to throw something else out for agendizing, but I want to keep it brief. It's relating to the hotels in Healdsburg. And specifically, I'd like to talk, I'd like to explore the idea of amending our land use to convert, to require hotels to have a conditional use permit, and also instituting a callback procedure so that when, if we, as a council, disagree with the interpretations of the Planning Commission, that we actually have some ability to call back those decisions. I make these suggestions because I think that there are some serious concerns among the community, and I think that the existing land use regulations don't quite address those concerns. And I fear that without having this conversation, we could have a development on our hands that frankly I wouldn't be happy with, and as leaving is my legacy. So with that, again, I want to keep it simple.
So could I rephrase it to mean have a future discussion about lodging establishments and how they relate to the Land Use Code?
Sure, that's reasonable to me.
Councilmember Gold, are you interested in having that conversation?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagley?
I have serious reservations about the concept, but I am always open to a discussion. I think that's what we're here for, so yes.
Vice Mayor Mansell? And yes, I'm interested in that as well, so that's another future topic.
Put it on the list.
All right, Vice Mayor Mansell?
There was another piece to that. There was another piece to that.
So when I say put it on the list, we will get these back to council as quickly as we can. So I didn't want that to be perceived as we're going to push it off. We'll get, we'll work with staff, figure out what our capacities are in certain areas, and bring back probably the second home piece, because that will be more work on the City Attorney's side of the House initially than we can talk to the Planning Department with regards to the hotel item.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Mansell?
So yeah, just, I'm on my bicycle all the time in this town. I ride around all the time, and I'm looking at a lot of changes in homes, and, you know, so that certainly makes sense to think about looking at what's happening to our streets in terms of the change of the homes and how they're being fixed up. I just really have a concern about that, so I'm really glad. But one thing I wanted to add, since this is all coming up about future agenda items, is I like a culture of work session. I don't want it always to be this rigid, and there's people waiting for different agenda items, but I'd really like to ask the council to get into more of a work session tone rather than a session where you're just making all these definitive decisions, or, I don't know, I just feel like that would be really great. So as I think about my journeys around this town on my bike and look at the changes going on, and, you know, I just really hope that we can have a culture in a city council that really wants to learn about topics. And that's why I have a problem with any of this without a study, and that's what I'm hoping that our city is moving toward, is a study about impacts such as tourism, but also the impacts of second homes. It seems like we're ready for this, and I understand the HTID issue is still looming out there. Sorry to use acronyms if you're not getting that, but I feel like it's really about learning about it before we make decisions to change and find out what it is that's actually going on. So I just bring that up. I did have a meeting with the Sonoma County Transit Systems, Brian Albee, and from the time I got on council, I've heard from numerous senior members of our community that are concerned about the change of delivery of service for them. And so I was glad to meet with Brian Albee, and I believe that with Director Themig, we're going to be getting some kind of a focus group so we can find out more about what our seniors want. I think that's valuable. We're in a small town. That's why we're in a small town. That's what we love about being in this place, is we have an ability to meet with people and have conversation and find out exactly what people want. And so I'm glad to know we have an action step with that. So that was a good meeting, but I don't want to just meet. I want to see people getting engaged and learning about something. I also went to the Ronert Park Mayor's Council Meeting, and again, just, a lot of the cities in our county are having the same issues we are. Affordable housing continues to be everybody's issue, as you know, and I'm really happy that we're moving on that, but I feel like more than ever, we need to learn more about the impacts of our success with getting people to want to come to our town, and so I think that's good. I think there's no threat with that. I just feel like some people are a little concerned that the balance is off, and I hear that all the time. School opened last week for me, and my school English teacher, year of 35, starts. Zucchini races, that was fun. That was a reminder of why I'm here, too. I really enjoyed watching that and seeing my fellow council members there, Mayor McCaffrey, just, you know, just being present and getting involved in things that are lighter, because that gets us through the stuff that's a little heavier. And then I did go to the Reach for Home benefit Saturday night at Alexander Valley Hall, and that was really powerful, and I'm really proud of the work that people have been putting forth to raise money. There seems to be an issue there for me, and I have to say it at this moment. You know, I understand we have a lot of wealth in our community and that people need incentives for bidding on things, but it was really strange to be sitting there in this beautiful place, bidding on these expensive things, and then thinking, it's kind of like at school when the kids have to have a pizza party to bring in cans. It's like, why don't we just give the pizza to the people that are hungry? And I just felt a little strange about that, and I don't know. I know that's how we fundraise, is we incentivize, and we have people that have a lot of money come and spend money, but it just felt really weird to have that video of the homeless people and then to also be sitting there and everyone's bidding $6,500 on whatever. And I know they made money that night, and I'm not criticizing the organization, but there just seems to be an interesting dichotomy there in our city, and I just hope that we look at that when we look at how we decide to spend our money. I am the director, I'm a director on the Sonoma County Transportation Authority, and I just want to be clear that that organization is very proud right now, well, actually SMART is, because this week, you probably already read, the SMART train is going to start, and it's really a big moment for a lot of people that have worked very hard, and I think we need to really honor it. So I'm going to be there Friday morning. I offer that to anybody that's interested in going to be part of that beginning, because I'm hoping we're going to see it coming north. I'm also a director on the Northern Sonoma County Air Quality Pollution Control District, that's what it is. And we're going to be talking about burning permits next week and the issues around what's going on with all the incentivizing for electric vehicles. So if you haven't heard, there's a lot of incentivizing right now for people to get an electric vehicle. So anyway, I'm glad to be here, and I just hope that we continue to be working on understanding problems and learning how to address them after we understand them, before we react and make changes, or don't make changes and just keep waiting. I think we need to learn before we act, so thank you, Mayor, for letting me share that.
Thank you. And for me, I haven't been to a city council meeting since June. It was very refreshing. I've been on vacation.
What do you think of our new digs?
Looks great. It sounds great. It's not as live. There's a lot of sound-absorbing material in here. It's nice. I understand I'm also on camera, which is interesting. I did manage to go to two Rin-Sonoma, Mosquito, and Vector Control District meetings in the last couple months, and in that time, we signed our agreement with our workers. So that was a good step to finally get that done. But other than that, I'd just like to thank Vice Mayor Mansell for running the meeting in my absence, and it's good to be back, so thank you. Okay, moving on. Item four, City Manager Reports, an update on the recruitment of Public Outreach, Communication, and Community Outreach Coordinator. City Manager McKillian.
Thank you, Mayor McCaffrey, councilmember. So I'm happy to report that we have hired, made a job offer to an outreach coordinator who has accepted the position. Unfortunately, she's not here tonight. I think she's trying to get some last-minute vacation time in before she starts on the 30th. So Rhea Borja comes to us from a number of different agencies. She actually worked for NASA for a while, worked on the Mars Rover program back in the mid-2000s, was working on that program for outreach. She worked at a private university and more recently has worked in the private sector for a marketing firm. So we had approximately 35 applicants for the position, went through a lengthy interview process, and feel really comfortable about bringing her on. So she'll start on the 30th, and she's got a long list of things to do with regards to community outreach. So I believe at the next meeting on September 5th, she'll be here to be able to formally introduce her. But I wanted to, I know that's been an item of interest for council and the community, I wanted to share that with you.
Thank you. Okay, next, public comments on non-agenda items. This time, it's set aside to repeat Steve's public comments regarding matters of general interest, not on the agenda but related to city council business pursuant to the Brown Act. However, the city council cannot consider any of these issues or take any of your action at this meeting. Speakers are encouraged to limit their time to three minutes. And if you'd like to pull something on the consent calendar, let us know, and we'll have that pulled. Is there anyone with a public comment on a non-agenda item? Welcome. J.C., if you could pull, push the button. There you go.
Oh, where it says push. I'm J.C. Cardwell, and I love what you said about second homes, because the problem is, if most of you were at our FFA parade, I've been going to it for 26 years, there weren't as many people. I went past the actual fair that night, not nearly as many people. And that's because I believe we have our second homers. And I was talking to a friend who actually is an accountant, and she's been here forever. She was born here, and she was the one that brought it to my attention. And I think if we look at what our income was for that, because it does give us money for the schools and also for FFA and 4H, I'd be interested as to how much we lost or how much we are losing. So thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you. Ken, welcome.
Ken Burkanyani, Department of Homeland Security. I have, under the consent calendar, A, I would like more detail on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bruce Abramson. I just came up to say I really appreciate, you know, the forward stand by Councilmember Gold on requesting, you know, to have the second home agendized, and I'm glad that the other council members also think that this is an important topic to look at. As you may well know, in town, many residents are frustrated that second home purchases, they continue to eat up our housing stock. I'm on the Housing Committee, and part of my goal on that committee is to help protect, preserve for affordable housing, but for housing in general. And the second home topic is so relevant right there. And then the other item, I just wanted to, I appreciate, you know, council... And then the other item, I just wanted to, I appreciate, you know, Councilmember Naucus requesting to have the hotel issue being agendized, maybe as a conditional use permit. Personally, I wouldn't mind if it were expanded to a broader, to cover the plaza and the downtown for permitted uses, to see whether permitted uses for hotels are really necessary, but I assume that all of that will be part of the research that staff will do, but I think it's a great topic, and thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Beau, welcome.
My name is Beau Simons. I'm here on behalf of the Heelsburg Literary Guild to thank the council and the city of Heelsburg for giving us a community benefit grant, which this, which we went and spent the money on for Mama the Alien, Mama la Extraterrestre, a bilingual story at Shed on August 10th. Councilman Higley was there, but you didn't include it in your report, so I figured I had to say something. We devised this great children's program with cooperation from the Sonoma County Library, Heelsburg Unified School District, Shed, Levitton Company Booksellers, Heelsburg Boys and Girls Club, the city's Parks and Rec Department, Camellia Inn, Coruscant Heelsburg, St. Paul's Episcopal Church, Spanish Language Congregation in Los Cien de Sonoma County, and tried to make it a broad-based thing. We hired Salvadoran children's author Renee Calatolagnes to read from his many bilingual books, which are kind of an immigrant's tale of the story in Heelsburg, and Mama the Extraterrestrial was about a young girl who finds an alien green card in her mother's person, thinks her mom's from outer space for a while. So it was, and Charity Anderson from the library devised a great activity, and we had yummy snacks prepared by chefs, by Shed's chef, and 118 children attended, and thank you for the money for that.
Thanks, Beau. Tim, welcome.
Hi. Tim Meinkin from Grove Street in Heelsburg. I wanted to comment on the request for proposal on the Tourism Sustainability Study, which has gone out. It hasn't gotten a lot of publicity. I'm surprised it hasn't had a little more public input or council input before it was developed. In reading it, there's a couple of comments. One is, it starts out by talking a lot about developing a baseline of economic impact of tourism, and then later on, it goes into the kind of the people and community and the other aspects, and I kind of feel like this RFP is flipped backwards. You know, I'm not sure that we need to spend a whole lot of time and money developing the economic impact of tourism in this town. I think we know those answers. I think we've heard the answers. I think it's, this should be much more about community impact, empowerment, environmental impacts, community-centered. Also, it was sent out, although it was published to everyone, it was sent specifically to a number of firms, some of which are actually sustainability tourism marketing firms, and they help cities and others market their tourism on a sustainable basis. I'm not sure that, you know, in this kind of report, we want people that, whose job it is to market tourism, to be doing a study of sustainable tourism in Heelsburg. So I just wanted to get more input on this. The RFP is out, the responses are due, and I just think that it needed some more input, and I'm looking forward to having a lot more input and see what happens with people's, the firm's response to this. Second thing is, I'd like to take item I off of the consent calendar, because I would like to know what the impact's going to be on the citizenry of Heelsburg of letter I.
Thank you.
Good evening. Robert News, all the way from Grant Street. Two things. First, I'd like to say that I'm pleased that you are going to at least give some consideration to the, I think, major problem of empty or rarely-used second homes at a time when people are being driven from their rentals. And then I wanted to make a few comments about the changes that have been recently made to the city council chambers. First, I'd like to point out that the sound is distinctly better. It's, you did a really good job. You can hear just about everybody just about all the time, and that's very, as somebody who's done sound engineering for, oh, I don't know, maybe 200 public events around the county, it's tricky. Even if you've got a fixed location where everything is set, it still can be very tricky, and you did a good job. The sound's even good, relatively good, out in the lobby. You may notice that I sometimes show up late. I'm usually working till 5:00, sometimes after, I gotta drive, I almost always need a shower, so it's hard for me to get here at 6:00. So I maybe linger in the lobby and wait for a relatively discreet moment to come in, and while I was lingering, I could hear what was going on really well. The lighting, I kind of like the lighting, the way you've got a very subdued lighting over on that side. It reminds one sort of English country pub. It's rather blazingly romantic. But the one thing that you haven't gotten right for the meetings yet is snacks. I go to a lot of different meetings, and some meetings, the snacks are pretty good, some not too good. This one is the worst. It's, the meetings are at dinnertime, they last a long time, people are hungry. They don't need a great meal necessarily, but a little bit of something to tide them over. People would be less grouchy, they'd be nicer to you, they'd be able to, more people would come, they'd be able to hang out. Snacks and refreshments, just a glass of wine should be fine. I mean, you want to limit them, but I go to a lot of meetings where people have one or, well, maybe two glasses, and that's fine. That doesn't cause any, it lightens things up, and I think snacks and refreshments is what's still needing. Keep working on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rosie, Fabian Sherman Street. Good to see you back, Sean, and hello to all the council and city employees. I went to the dinner, I was a volunteer at the Reach for Home dinner. I work very closely with the same folks, same population that they do, and I work with Colleen and Rick and everybody that they have under them, working out there really hard. And I just want to let you know, I got an informal number at the end of the event, which was over $100,000 that was raised, and that was just a brief, quick number. I was there as well. Sorry, give me a minute. When Colleen disclosed to us her passion and why she does this, many of us have family members or friends that are outside, for whatever reason, it doesn't matter, and I'm going to help her, and I feel really great about being able to do that, find her a person. I have a daughter, 20 years old, and Colleen has a 25-year-old daughter that is living outside and has not contacted home, nor has the desire to do so. I have my own nonprofit that I've had for many years, which is a true nonprofit, Stand By Me Social Advocacy Services. It's a little different than what they do, because I deal with everybody, all the misfits of society, all the folks that nobody really wants to hang out with, and the people who really need the most help, like elders, at-risk youth, people who live outside, and the sort. Anyone who comes to me, it's a real one-on-one kind of a thing. I am applying for a grant for the first time with Heelsburg Forever. I went to the workshop last week and talked with everyone there, and I'm pretty sure I'm the poorest nonprofit in town, and I'm just asking for your support, and I'm going to be asking all of you to come on, ride along if you like, if you need any kind of assistance understanding the real problem we do have in this town, which is mostly invisible. A lot of people don't see it, and that's only because our guys are really considerate. But they are becoming unable to be that way anymore, and I would like to work on getting an inclement weather shelter together with Gale in an appropriate location, and that's going to happen, and I'm going to be coming to you a lot to ask for that to happen, because that's the minimum that we need to have this year for this winter in this town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Richard Berg, Fitch Street. It was nice to see most of you at the Singletree benefit, and I wanted to say that it would be really valuable if the city, I have no idea what your relationship is to the contractor who's digging holes in the roundabout seemingly forever, that has clearly impacted not just the Singletree, but other businesses. I heard a rumor that perhaps you're going to challenge their contract, or maybe do an evaluation of the number of rain days they claim in terms of their promised completion and their actual completion, but perhaps you could leverage our role with the contractor to get them to have their folks eat at the Singletree every day, or perhaps create a loan that would enable the Singletree to survive. My experience at the benefit was, there may have been 100 or 200 people over the seven hours that it ran, but I'm not sure that it's going to really make a dent in their business model. The other thing I wanted to talk about was a concern I have that the studies you're, have initiated and are initiating, the Sustainable Tourism Study, the Parking Study, which we're going to hear about, none of them are as integrated and take a systems view like the Ru-Dat did almost 30 years ago, which was a look at the future of the city on a long-term view, and integrated many elements of community life that resulted in the decision to choose tourism as the direction for the city. And what I think is happening is we look at individual problems, but we don't consider the systemic nature and the relationship between every single one of them. And I think it might be possible for the city to get the AIA to send a team here to do a study, like the Ru-Dat, they still do them, you can apply for one, and they might get it on, we might get it on the schedule, and it would be an integrated view by people who look at urban planning, economic issues, housing issues, all of which we're wrestling with case by case. I went to the Housing Committee meeting as an ex-member, trying to offer some of the history of the Housing Committee and my own knowledge, and one of the things that they don't have in front of them that a Ru-Dat might offer is, what will Heelsburg look like when the 600-odd remaining developable sites are built out? Not all of them are residential, not all of them require GMO allocation, but what will Heelsburg be like then? Along those lines, I was talking to someone about the height limit in downtown, which I think Hotel Heelsburg is at, and in fact, we should consider, if we're going to open land use, to change the height limits so that we can have higher density downtown, that we can build more housing downtown, because if we don't change that, it's going to be very difficult to accommodate the kinds of goals we have for middle housing, affordable housing, and places for people who want second homes that don't gobble up the existing housing structures in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing nobody else, I will close public comment, and we'll move on to the consent calendar. I have two items that are polled, item A and item I. Can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Yeah.
Minus item A and item I.
I move to approve the consent agenda item with the exception of agenda items A and I.
Second. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gold?
Yes.
Councilmember Higley?
Yes.
Councilmember Naucus?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mansell?
Mayor McCaffrey?
Yes. Okay, now we'll move on to item 6A, Consider Acceptance of a Storm Drain Easement Over a Portion of 758 Pardon Lane.
It looks like I'll be dealing with that one. Thank you, Mayor. Brent Sawyer, our Public Works Director, is actually on vacation, so I will pitch it for him. This is basically a simple easement, which typically, whenever the city installs a storm drain or any other public facility, we require an easement to go over, that a public utility easement. For whatever reason, the utility easement was never received when the storm drain was put in. This appears to be more of a fix-it, if you will. I believe the property owner, the property owner's agent informed the city that there's a storm drain on the property, I think during a sale or something to that effect, agreed to allow the city to put an easement over the storm drain, and that's what you have in front of you tonight. With the easement, does it prevent the property owner from building over that storm drain and allows the city to access it anytime necessary? So I believe that, I'm looking at Terry, because he deals with these all the time, but I think that pretty much covers what the easement is for this property. It sounds like, appears in the staff report and talking to our Public Works Director, this is simply the opportunity for the city to take something that we should have received, we should have gotten some time ago.
Any questions from council? Any comments, questions from the public?
I asked, I have a poll, because I just didn't understand what it just said, portion of 758 Pardon Lane, because in April 4th, 2016, the then-council agreed on a $300,000 amount to fix the problem. So is this going to fix the whole street?
I believe this is, I believe this is unrelated to that project.
To this, to this A?
Yeah.
Well, what does A mean?
There's a storm drain that's underneath the property of 758.
So is this part of the fixing of the?
No, this is not.
Okay, so nothing's been done about our problem since over a year ago?
That's a separate issue, I think. We'll have it at a future meeting, yes. Any other questions or comments from public? Okay, I'll close the public comment. Can I get a motion to approve this item?
Oh, so moved.
Second.
Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gold?
Yes.
Councilmember Higley?
Yes.
Councilmember Naucus?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mansell?
Yes.
And Mayor McCaffrey?
Yes. Okay, move on to item 6I, trench and excavation work related to underground utility district of Heelsburg Avenue and Mill Street. Director Crowley.
Good evening, mayors, councilmembers. So this item is related to the Underground Utility District, and the recommended action for council is to adopt a resolution rejecting all bids received for the Heelsburg Avenue, Mill Street Underground Utility District, and direct staff to re-advertise the project. To broaden a little bit of background on the project, so in conjunction with the five-way project that's doing the street improvements and the underground utilities, the wet utilities, water, storm drains, wastewater, the city council also formed an Underground Utility District along Heelsburg Avenue and Mill Street. The Underground Utility District requires all utilities with overhead wires and cables to place those facilities underground. It's largely an aesthetics improvement to the area. The undergrounding of the facilities requires the installation of conduits and boxes to put those wires into the ground, also requires some ground-mounted equipment for each of the utilities. To install the needed conduits and boxes, the city requested bids from qualified contractors to perform this work. So give you maybe a little bit more of a visual of the scope of the work. The undergrounding project extends along Heelsburg Avenue between the five-way and all the way down south to Exchange Avenue. There's a small piece of Exchange Avenue that'll also be undergrounded as well, and then the other major section of it is Mill Street from Highway 101 all the way to Center Street. So it's a fairly large project. It's the largest undergrounding project the city has done in several decades. Participating utilities include the city of Heelsburg, also includes AT&amp;T and Comcast. The project includes roughly 3,000 feet of trench and about 125 boxes and/or equipment pads, so there's a significant amount of work that's going to be put in place here. So as far as the bidding process went, the city advertised for bids on June 29th as well as July 6th, requested the bids for the project. As the work is specialized, dry utility trenches have to be built to city standards as well as AT&amp;T standards and Comcast standards. It's unique in that construction of the work. To be considered, the bidders are required to hold certain licenses and demonstrate experience with large dry utility joint trench packages. Two bids were received and opened on Aug. joint trench packages. Two bids were received and opened on August 1st with TerraCon Constructors providing the apparent low bid for an amount of roughly 1.6 million. The second bid was received by Stags Construction for an amount of 1.8 million. Upon review of the two bids, both include errors and omissions. So for TerraCon's bid, TerraCon failed to list the value of the subcontractor's work as required by the bid documents in the Public Contracting Code. And so the Public Contracting Code is pretty specific about what the requirements are, and also the bidder's instructions in the bid documents are pretty specific. So that was an omission that was provided by TerraCon. The primary contractor, TerraCon, also did not provide qualifying dry utility joint trench experience. TerraCon is very well-known for wet utility installations and is, works for a lot of different public agencies throughout Sonoma County and the area, but is not, did not demonstrate the dry utility experience. TerraCon, in their bid package, did include their subcontractor's experience with dry utilities. However, the jobs that were listed to demonstrate the experience were small in nature, less than 250 feet. We have a project that's 3,000 feet, and so it didn't demonstrate the experience required by the bid. In review of Stags' bid, Stags Construction failed to provide a bid bond at the time of the bid opening. Bid bonds are required by Public Contracting Code. They're also required by the bidder's instructions, and they basically secure the city in the process of getting the contract awarded. TerraCon also, or Stags also forgot to sign the addendum number two for the, the bid instructions. Typically, that's a minor regularity and would have been waived, but there's other issues with both of the bids that staff is now recommending that both bids be found non-responsive because they failed to meet certain requirements of the Public Contracting Code and the bidder's instructions. Once that, once that recommendation is pushed forward, again, the city would go out and re-advertise the project. Re-advertising the project will allow both bidders the opportunity to fix these errors and/or omissions. And then also, in addition to this, since the Heelsburg Avenue project is an active, ongoing project, staff is recommending a very short time for the re-advertising of the project. Typically, the, I believe the contract code allows for 15 days, and we would try and shoot for that target. So to keep the project moving forward. And with that, with the recommended action, I will add one more comment because of the reason the item was polled. So economic impact, this is paid for primarily by the city, but also AT&amp;T and Comcast will pay a share of the joint trench costs. That's part of the obligation to the Underground Utility District. When the formation of that's happening, Comcast and AT&amp;T have to pay to underground their facilities. And so this is a kind of a partnership, the city being an elite agency in the joint trench. Comcast and AT&amp;T will refund a portion of that money, roughly about 40% to 50% of those costs. The other portion would be paid for from electric ratepayers, which was also included in the rate base. So with that, I'll ask for any council questions.
Terry, do you think that the two contractors will resubmit a new bid with correct information?
I, I do. I've had active conversations with both contractors, and they both really would like to have this project.
Very good. Any other questions, council?
Going back at the bid, you're not, you don't have any concerns about timing and, because I mean, you've got an active construction zone.
So we've got an active-
So basically bringing in another contractor in the same place.
Yeah, it's a, it's a challenging project. Everybody's kind of on board with that assessment. It's a challenging project. The project's not moving as fastly as we'd like to see it, but I think that if we can turn around this re-advertising in a reasonable amount of time and get the contract awarded, that we can get somebody out there through the winter months and get all the dry utility conduits and boxes installed such that when the plan is today, they come back and finish the roundabout sidewalks, vinyl paving, all that kind of stuff, that the city wouldn't have to go back into the street for many, many years.
One thing I'm noticing is, is people coming in and out of our town are having a tough time coming in and out of our town. So I know that the bridgeway, there's something going on with PG&E that's been going on, and that's, that's going to last until when? Do you know that? Because I mean, it just feels like our arteries coming in are just, there's just all kinds of things going on. And then, of course, this, the Dry Creek exit has its own. So I'm just questioning, I, I know that time is, we're doing everything we can, but I'm just trying to figure out how that corresponds with what's happening with the south entrance and exit as well. Like, is, is this, if this starts, then we'll have this going at the same time? Is, is that going to be finished in the south?
I'm not sure of the timing of PG&E's construction project.
Do they have to check in with us at all about their permit to be able to close things down or change traffic conditions, or is that, I just get-
There, there should be an encroachment permit with PG&E. I'm just not aware of that. That's kind of more on Public Works Director Salmy's slate.
So yes, there is an encroachment permit. We looked at this back when the Future Farmers Fair was going on, when we had the, this, the traffic jam back there. They do have an encroachment permit. Again, I do not recall what the date to, the encroachment to expire is, but I want to, well, I'll wait till the director gets back, so I give you guys the right information.
If the company doesn't have the experience with wet or dry, I can't remember which one it was, why would they reapply if they don't have that ability to demonstrate competency in that particular kind of construction? Why would they resubmit if they don't have the experience for it?
Well, they may be able to look at the projects that they listed and find something else.
Oh, okay. So they'll just re-
You know.
Characterize it?
Maybe that's, that's, but that's a good question. You know, if you're, if you don't have the qualifications, should you submit a bid?
Is there anyone from the public who has any questions or comments on this item? Welcome, Alan.
Mayor and councilmembers, Alan Cohen, Center Street, neighbor of this project. And I'm, this is probably a dumb question, Terry, but I'm just wondering why is the joint trench going out to bid a year after the project started? The project's delayed. I mean, is that normal to delay that portion, or wouldn't it all go out kind of the same time to be coordinated in that fashion?
So if there's other questions?
Right. Well, wait, is there any other questions or comments from the public? Okay, I'll close the public comment on this item. We had a question there, Terry?
So the timing of the joint trench, one of the things we wanted to do with the joint trench is install that after all of the wet utilities were placed. Wet utilities depend on gravity, whereas the electric utilities, the communication conduits don't have that obligation to have a certain gravity flow. So our conduits can rope around and, and be adjusted in height and level around wet utilities. So typical standard procedure is get the wet utilities all installed first, and then jump in with joint trench. The installation of wet utilities has just taken a lot longer than we thought. And so pulling the trigger on getting the bids for the joint trench has been delayed.
Thank you. If there's any more discussion up here, I entertain a motion.
I will move to accept this item. H? I, sorry.
Second?
I have a motion in a second. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gold?
Yes.
Councilmember Higley?
Yes.
Councilmember Naiokas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Menzel? And Mayor McCaffrey?
Yes. Okay, we're through the consent calendar. Tonight, we have no public hearings, so we'll move on to item 8A, the Downtown Heelsburg Parking Management Plan. City Manager McHaleen, take it away.
Mayor McCaffrey, councilmembers. Director DeRosa is going to introduce the item, and then I believe Stefan from Walker Parking is going to present the item.
Good afternoon, Mayor McCaffrey, members of the city council. Interim Plenary Director Maya DeRosa. It is my sincere pleasure to introduce you to Stefan Walker with Walk, Stefan Torew with Walker Parking. For those of you that have not had the pleasure of meeting him before, I'll give you a brief background on his bio and some other cities that he's worked in before letting him take the reins tonight. His focus at Walker Parking is on parking policy and planning in commercial districts, town centers. He's a member of Walker's internal municipal task, task force, whose members research the parking issues faced by cities. His analysis frequently deal with the relationship between parking policy and related issues such as economic development, the cost of real estate, transportation alternatives, and smart growth. He also works on studies for mixed-use developments, universities, airports, and other land uses as well. He has a Master's of Arts in Urban Planning from UCLA, where he studied with the parking expert, Professor Donald Shute. Subsequently, Stefan was Planning Analyst for Gilmore Associates in Los Angeles. It's a development firm that you may know of, the champion, the adaptive reuse ordinance for the city of LA. His current experience working in Northern California cities includes Davis, Carmel by the Sea, Santa Rosa, Nevado, and Napa. And we will introduce the presentation, and I'll let Stefan take it from here. We'll be able to ask questions. Thank you.
Welcome back, Stefan.
Thank you very much, Mayor McCaffrey, members of the council. It's very nice to be here. Thank you. Maya, that was quite an introduction, much more than usual when we go before council. But this is, I don't know how many times that we've come before this council, your planning commission, met with newer stakeholders, of course, city staff are very glad to be back here. And we have done a lot of work. We've thought a lot about Heelsburg. Of course, you mentioned, we've heard already so many different policy issues while we've been here. So many of these tie into parking. And today, because of the work we've done, we spoke with city staff, and we wanted to try to succinctly sum some of this up, but give you a comprehensive idea of, you know, of all the work that has been done, because it is substantial. It seems like parking should be pretty simple, especially in a smaller city, but it's not. And, and we're trying to cover all this in this presentation. Okay, so the agenda, talking about setting a framework here, talk about some of the studies that have been done. We've done a number of studies. And, and before we started here, really working in 2013, there were earlier studies that we, that we drew from. When we talked about coming back here and talk, and talk about the work that we had done, we requested, given the growth that you've experienced, you know, changes in the economy, that we wanted to re-quantify conditions so that we, we could answer the question, you know, well, you know, have you looked at conditions lately? And yes, we have. We had staff out here in July, really looking at, at how the parking was performing pretty consistently with what we had seen in the past. But we wanted to be able to answer the question. And we really boiled down what we saw, you know, the question is, you know, how do you move forward, given the information we have, the issues you're, you're trying to address? You know, do you keep doing what you've been doing? Do you increase parking enforcement, or do you take more of a comprehensive, I will say, hands-on parking management approach? And we'll go through that based on what we've seen. So trying to tell you where we've been, we really got involved here in 2013. Redevelopment Agency had been dissolved. That was, Redevelopment Agency was the source of funding for, for parking in your parking exemption zone, where you could have development without, businesses, developers could add space, grow businesses without the parking requirement, without adding more parking along with each business and, and additional square footage. So the question was, when the Redevelopment Agency went away, and given the growth you were seeing, what, what the policy should be. So that was a parking and Lufy analysis, but we talked to city staff, and we said, you know, and there was talk about that here today, you know, funding, the number of spaces, we really need to look at, at something much broader here. How parking is being managed downtown, the parking patterns. So what we did is we looked at a 2008 study performed by TJKM, a traffic engineering firm, fairly local. It was a very competent study, very quantitative. We drew on some of that data. We used that to, to look at your parking and Lufys. But then we really looked at parking demand analyses, recommended a parking management plan. And most recently, we've looked at your parking requirements citywide. So I think we have a pretty good understanding of everything going on here. And this is what we're going to talk about this evening. So the downtown parking study, and here's, what I want to bring up here is just how fairly consistently things have gone. The downtown parking study, before we got here, we saw parking demand at peak in your downtown was 67, 60 to 70%, around 65% occupancy, which means roughly 35% in the larger downtown, 35% of the parking spaces were unoccupied at the peak. Now, that's often hard for people to believe who come and drive around the plaza, to think there are that many empty spaces. But we've worked in a lot of cities up and down the coast, and that's surprisingly consistent, and particularly in a city that doesn't intensively manage its parking. And then when we went out in 2013, 2014, we found the numbers were the same as we, as was found in the 20, in the 2008 study. About 65% of parking spaces at peak were occupied. We looked at turnover. About a fifth of the cars, one out of every five spaces, cars even in the three-hour zone were staying longer than four hours. That's actually pretty good, but it's probably not acceptable, because it means essentially, when you can't find spaces, not only can you not find spaces, a lot of those cars have been sitting there for a very long time. And that's a, that's, that's one of the biggest issues with parking, because when you want to increase capacity, you increase capacity through turnover. So this was an issue. And then we looked at rightsizing your parking. You know, there, there are a lot of parking lots out here, especially a little bit to the north of downtown. You see, the newer the development, typically, the larger the parking lots. And when we go out and we look at parking lots, or in some cities, parking structures, we do find a lot of spaces. We always look for oil stains. And if there aren't a lot of oil stains, it means that maybe nobody has ever parked there. So the, the spaces up close, front to the, close to the door, close to the plaza, close to Costas, you know, wherever he wants to park, oh, those are used all the time. But when you have a lot of spaces that sit empty a lot of the time, that's, that's, that's an unused resource, and it's not very, it's not good for the city. And we'll, we'll talk about that. So one thing that came up that I wanted to bring up, early on, we discussed with the council when we were here, why not just build a parking structure? And we were involved in looking at, at fees and funding future parking, and we discussed this extensively. But the issue was, well, two or threefold. We found, again, there are plenty of empty spaces downtown, especially at the periphery. Where there was a problem was really right in the center of downtown. But around downtown, there were plenty of spaces. The parking deficit, again, it's those three-hour spaces, that's the problem, and that's where the perception has formed. But then we also saw that even, and even if you built new parking, it wouldn't, you wouldn't build parking on the plaza, obviously. It would be built further out. Maybe it's, maybe the closest, the west lot. But that's not going to pull people out of the spaces where there was a problem. And then finally, the cost. And I think we came forward and we said, if you want to build a parking structure, it's going to cost you at least $30,000 per space, per net new space. The money has to come from somewhere. It could come from the developers and the business community. It could come from the general fund, but it's a lot of money. And it, to build a parking structure, you need to be able to justify 300, 400 new spaces. And we didn't see the need for that many spaces. So everything really came together. I think all sides saw, well, for one reason or another, a parking structure was not the policy priority. So let me, again, putting this in context. So in 2014, we went out there and we quantified conditions. 63% peak occupancy. You'll see all the red along the streets, and the closer you get to the plaza, the redder it is. But when we looked at about 2,500 spaces in the area, we took everything into account, the public, the on-street, the off-street, the private spaces, which keep in mind are required by the city, so they're real spaces, they have a job to do. But we found almost 1,000 spaces available at the peak. Now granted, some of those are going to go away in one way or another. You may have more development coming on, you know, here and there, but 1,000 spaces is a lot of spaces. And at the same time, though, right around the plaza, you see that red area, you know, 90 to 100% occupied throughout the day. Just about any time you drive by the plaza, you couldn't find a space. So that, we felt, was the issue. That was where the perception was formed, and that was the problem. People couldn't find spaces where they wanted them, where they needed them. So this is what we found in July. And I'll see if I can, can I go back and forth on this? I'm not sure. But you see, the, the maps are almost identical. Now, we did find things that are busier in 2017 than in 2014. 68% occupancy, 855 spaces available, as opposed to 990 spaces available. Things did get busier. And, and you know, we just, we quantified, we did a calculation, the size of a parking, of a parking space. But when I put this together, I thought, okay, these 855 spaces, that's about three acres plus of asphalt, empty asphalt in your downtown. Now, you can say, but we need parking, and you absolutely do. Everyone needs parking. A certain amount of parking is necessary for the vitality and the convenience of the community. But these are the spaces that we found were empty even at the busiest time. So certainly, you need parking, but these spaces aren't doing anything, even at the busiest time, which is something of a red flag. busiest time, which is something of a red flag, as we look at how parking is managed, and we look about, look at what we should do in the future. And once again, right around the plaza and a few blocks out, we found that on-street spaces were effectively full. This was a block-by-block tabulation. You see all, it's the same color scheme, you see all those red areas, those central blocks where things are full, they're not turning over very frequently. You have a three-hour time limit. That's pretty unusual, and that's, if I can use the term, that's pretty generous. Most cities in a business area have two hours, ninety minutes. So if people are overstaying a three-hour time limit, that's a long time. I have my colleague here, Tanya Schleck, and we've been working, looking at different commercial centers around the state, and we see average length of stay, even places like Santa Monica, where you have, you know, dining, you have theater, you have retail, you have the beach, you have performances. The average length of stay there is two and a half hours. And two and a half hours is pretty consistent. So here, you have three hours. It's a long time, it's still full, and people are still overstaying. That's a concern. So we need to look at how we manage that. So overall, things were a little busier in 2017 than 2014, but pretty consistent. Again, towards the center of town, it was consistently full. Cars did turn over more frequently now. And, you know, one of our recommendations several years ago was more, for lack of a better term, aggressive, consistent enforcement. It's hard for a smaller city if you don't have a parking department or somebody focused on that. But here, you have your police department, and they did, and they told us that they were concentrating more on enforcement. So the number of cars overstaying four hours went down from twenty-two percent to fourteen percent. That's pretty good, but it's still one out of about every six or seven spaces, cars stays over four hours. And again, some of those five hours, six hours, seven hours, it's hard to enforce a time limit. So this is still, we feel, an issue. There are still people overstaying. Now, another way to look at it is we found thirty-eight percent of the spaces at any given time, or I should say, we found thirty-eight percent of the spaces in the three-hour zone had cars parked in there four hours or longer throughout the day. That's a long time. And that's, so somebody driving around there, they're looking for a space, they're passing a lot of cars that have been sitting there a long time. So part of the question is, well, what happens in the future? And we looked at some, we talked to city staff, talked about some what we thought were reasonable, even maybe, you know, development scenarios, you know, what might happen? How could things grow? And we took some, you know, took several thousand square feet, thought about, well, what would that do to parking demand? You know, some of it might be parked on-site, some of it might not be. But when you're looking at several hundred parking spaces, eight hundred-plus parking spaces available now, we really could not imagine a development scenario that would eat away at your supply of parking. You have a lot of parking out there. A lot of it's at the periphery, but it still exists, and we would suggest that it should, it's, it's a misused resource if you don't allocate that somehow. Otherwise, it's just asphalt. Of those spaces, granted, most of them are private. And that's still a question. How long are those spaces supposed to be sitting out there before you use them? And there are cities that are doing a better job at incorporating private spaces in the public supply. We suggest you take a look at that. So most of the spaces are not public, but there's still close to three hundred public spaces in one form or another that were sitting empty. So even when we consider a future demand scenario, we don't think that you're going to eat up all your parking supply. There's still plenty of parking out there. We bring that up in terms of how you manage parking, and the idea that, well, should we build more parking? You could, but it would be a very costly endeavor, and a lot, not very desirable, we would suggest, given the supply that you have out there. So all this, again, hopefully, this isn't too succinct, but we came to the conclusion that you have three options. Make no changes in the current parking program. Keep doing what you're doing. Again, enforcement has been stepped up. That's hard, it's labor-intensive. Can it be, is it sustainable? Not sure, but, you know, things are going better, but still, we would say, not at an ideal level, especially when you have so little parking available, available in the center of town, and so much available in something of a donut around, around town, especially, I will say, to the, to the west and to the north. You could increase parking enforcement efforts. That increases turnover, get, that spreads out the demand, but you've already done that. There is, the marginal benefit is questionable. We don't think that you'll get the numbers down from what we've seen much further. And then there's also a question is, how aggressively do you want people issuing parking tickets? I want to be careful how I say this, but some people park for a very, very long time inappropriately and deserve a ticket. Some people get caught in the net. You know, they stay five minutes over. They, maybe they were dining out and then going to a business, and then spending time in the plaza. Those aren't the people that you want cited. You want to have a welcoming downtown for the residents, for people who are visiting. So enforcement's a double, double-edged sword. So finally, a comprehensive parking management plan. Again, typically, parking, parking requirements has been all about adding capacity. And our firm has been around over fifteen year, fifty years, pardon me. We used to primarily design garages, and it was all about more and more spaces, but we found it's, it's less about adding spaces, it's about managing spaces, operating them. And what's changed in recent years is you now have the technology to do it a little more efficiently. So comprehensive parking management plan, you know, what can you do to manage your system? And, you know, there was talk here today about looking at things comprehensively. We heard about bicycling, and we know that you're going to get a bike share program, we know that Smart is eventually going to reach here, that parking is just one component of the, of the transportation system, and we would encourage you to look at it as such, if for no other reason, that it's efficient to look at other modes. That providing additional parking spaces, or enforcing a different, additional parking spaces, if you can have some people coming to town, coming downtown from their homes or from neighboring communities in a different way, it's, it's just, it's just efficient for no other reason. So option one, no changes. Likely, you'd say, the same problems that you've been seeing over the past decade that we've observed, likely little improvement. And I will say, and not to sound flippant or cynical, we work with plenty of communities that we hear from every few years who say they have a parking problem, but it's tough, but, you know, changes are not implemented. And, you know, you go through the newspapers and you see ten years ago, twenty years ago, thirty years ago. And sometimes, it's just, it's just agreed to, that's a fact of life, that nice places tend to have parking problems, because a lot of people descend on them, tend, we work in nice cities, because that's where you have a lot of congestion, everybody's trying to get there. But no changes, you're probably going to see more of the same. So option two, increased enforcement. You've seen improvements already. You might see some more improvements, you might see some, you know, more people getting citations or tickets who you'd rather not cite, but that's part of enforcing, you know, you have to enforce everybody. We'd suggest that parking penalties, you can enforce more and maybe have a first citation at a low rate. And then after the fourth citation, really hammer somebody who says, you know, look, you keep parking in a place that's for visitors, you know, residents and customers. But it's difficult, it's, this is difficult. Enforcement is a difficult thing to do, which is why most cities struggle, struggle with it. So the last thing, which is really where we came, where we landed, I'd say, the last two studies, is comprehensive parking management, which would include an element of paid parking. Paid parking is used to allocate spaces. It's not used so that people pay a lot of money, you want people to pay a little money, because they're staying there for a short time. If they're staying there for a long period of time, the person who sits in a space eight hours could also be, could also be sitting in a space where you have four people come for two hours. And that's what we want. We don't want to push anybody out, we want to self-select who parks where, so that, so that the people who park longer can spread out and make room for the people who are staying a little less time. It's very efficient. The revenue from paid parking then could be used for all sorts of improvements, to improve signage, to improve your parking system, to improve transportation. And that's been a trend. So in terms of looking at, you know, what's different? We go into communities, well, we've gone through this before, what's different today? And two things that are different, I think that the policies are much more refined, and the technology is available to implement those policies. So what does a parking management, paid parking, look like? You know, if we put this all together, on the left, we see typically, and in fact, you know, that might be the plaza block, cars circling, you know, the average estimate for an impacted area where you can't find parking spaces is that thirty percent of the traffic is generated by people just looking for spaces. So if you can open just a couple of spaces so that somebody's not circling, but they see a space, you know, one or two spaces per block, then that will stop the circling, you, you're moving those few cars, you're not moving everybody, you're just moving a few cars out so that the people who need spaces can find them. And that's done with a paid parking system. These pictures, I think, were all taken in Healdsburg here. You know, we see, we see a lot of street fronts here, a lot of, I should say, you know, curb area with empty spaces most, most of the time. We see private spaces, it always kills me, you know, when I drive by, you know, everybody's circling around for parking, but then you see a private lot that's empty. So on the left side, we see, you know, this is really current conditions in many respects, blocks are full, but some blocks and some private parking is empty. On the other hand, if we can open up a few spaces on the block and push just a few cars out to underutilized, to empty asphalt, the three acres we were talking about, we think that would be a great improvement. So parking management and paid parking, you know, direct the revenue to other solutions. Here's something else that we've discussed, and this came up, I think, years ago in our earliest discussions. You have a lot of visitors to this community. So we looked at, you know, if you had paid parking in the community, was it reasonable to discount or offer a free parking period for Healdsburg residents? And there are a few cities that do that, there are a couple in Florida, I believe Miami or Miami Beach. Dunedin, I was talking, worldwide, I was talking to colleagues in Florida who, they've, they've implemented part of this, at least, where residents get a preference. In my community, I live a few blocks from the city next door, they have tennis courts in that city. I know that taxpayers in that city paid for those tennis courts. I pay more to play tennis there than the people who live there, and that's perfectly fine with me, they're providing a service. So the idea that Healdsburg residents could have a preference is fair. If, it's a policy decision, but if that's one thing that, that helps us understand how paid parking could be implemented, we think it's a reasonable thing to do, very reasonable. In terms of parking, there are parking areas in some communities that do charge non-residents and don't charge residents, or there's a differential, we think that's reasonable. But the funds, the funds or resources to administer the program, you now have, you now have a revenue source. You know, you have no one in the city who's totally dedicated to parking. You know, you have, you have, you know, a police department that does some enforcement, you have engineering that maybe works on the streets or the signage, you have economic development or, or community development and planning who look at the ratios. But it's very helpful to have one person who, who can bring it all together, because parking is a system, it's not siloed, even though we tend to think of it that way. So in a nutshell, the parking issues you see now, we always, they're costing people time, they're costing people frustration. But if you can put it into a little revenue, then time and frustration doesn't generate anything productive, but the revenue can go towards solutions. There are a number of cities that are operating this way now increasingly, and we're encouraging, we think, given what we've seen in Healdsburg, that it would be productive for your community as well. So again, parking management programs, programs that encourage employee parking and employee parking areas, TDM, transportation demand management, you know, more use of bicycles, none of these are for everybody. But if they can be for a few people, we think it can have a good impact. Tour bus and limo parking in a designated area, valet parking. Valet parking these days is not necessarily a luxury item, it's to be efficient, to get cars out from right on the street and to park them in an area, maybe a private lot that was, that wasn't utilized before. Encourage pedestrian vehicle wayfinding, leasing of private spaces for the use of the public. Make it a transaction, you know, not just the private sector's goodwill, but say, hey, you have spaces, it's a lot more efficient for us to use those spaces than to build new ones in some respects. You know, let's see if we can do that. And then a staff member focused on all of this. We've seen this in a number of cities, and especially with the demise of redevelopment, the funding hasn't been in there. But if you had a one-stop shop in the, in the, in the city, we think it would be very productive, it would pay dividends, because parking is such an issue here. Ambassadors, you know, rather than have a police department focus on enforcement, have ambassadors. The guys in the picture here, this is a city in Texas with which we've worked, you know, they're out there, they want turnover, they want, they don't, they don't want to cite people, they want compliance. And I know, you know, if somebody's overstayed a meter, I know one of these guys, he said, he said, he goes, you know, they say, oh, please don't ticket me, and he puts his hand over his head, and he said, if you can feed the meter before I take my hand off my head, you know, I won't give you a ticket. It's, it's, you know, this is not law enforcement, this is really customer service, customer relations. And we think it would be very productive to put it into an ambassador role. Ambassadors do other things when they're out there, you know, hospitality, safety, cleaning. Those programs are out there in other cities, we would encourage Healdsburg to, to look at those as well. So again, there's, there's so much you can do if you tie the parking together and transportation in an enterprise fund. You have other enterprise funds in the city. Right now, you know, funding for parking, it's, it's, you know, your cost, where are those, where are those costs hitting? Where is the revenue hitting? We're encouraging you to put it in a nice, in a, in a nice, clear enterprise so you can see what you're spending on parking, and, and hopefully generate some revenue. We have the parking in Lufy, let's put it in a nice, neat box, so you can manage it. What gets measured gets managed. You know, we talked about bike and peder improvements, comprehensive wayfinding, rewards programs for residents and employees who choose not to drive. You know, everybody who doesn't drive has a, has a positive economic impact on the city. They're part of the solution. Okay, again, there's a lot to say here, we're going through here pretty quickly. San Clemente, we worked with, the city of San Clemente, they had a lot of private lots. We thought, what can we do with all these empty spaces? They now have a program where the city strikes a deal with the private owner, they will sign their lot, they will improve their lot, they will insure their lot, and they will pay the owner, you know, something, a monthly fee in order to open up those spaces for the public, if the owner says, look, nobody's using all these spaces anyway. And that's, that's something that's been mutually beneficial to the city and small businesses there. Given the spaces you have here, we would strongly encourage that. So before I talked about, about paid parking, these are just a couple of cities that we worked on. One is, this is, you know, a larger parking system, but in Southern California, we found all these spaces like yours, it's not always employees, but a lot of employees, seventy-one percent of the cars were parked in thirty-one percent of the spaces. And which are the thirty-one percent? The best spaces, the ones by the front door. So that's pretty standard, you know, peripheral and private spaces were underutilized. So here's what we did, eight hundred spaces, this was a retail and restaurant area, we would go there for meetings at nine AM, all the spaces were full. Well, the customers, the businesses weren't even open for business yet, but all the spaces were full. And they were at one turnover per day, so eight hundred cars sat there in their central area. After they had paid parking, or actually, they had free parking for two hours and reduced that period, those eight hundred spaces suddenly started turning two and a half times a day. So they increased their capacity by two thousand cars per day without building a single additional space. Those eight hundred cars that were sitting there, they went to the periphery. And those spaces were there, we identified them before, so that we considered a real win. In addition, bicycle and transit usage went up markedly, because the employees were parked a little further out, and some of them said, you know what, rather than walk from here, I'll just take my bike, I'll only live a few blocks away anyway. Another city in Northern California, smaller city, very similar to yours, ninety-five percent occupied, probably closer to a hundred percent, they had a two-hour time limit, but forty-two percent of those spaces were staying over three hours, twenty-six percent staying over four hours. You know, you call it the employee shuffle, the two-hour dance. Not bad people, but bad incentives. And I've done it myself also, I move my car around, you know, because I want to park close. But the problem is that then there's a customer or visitor who just wants to run into a business or just wants to have lunch and can't find a space. So here, they went from free to paid parking. Occupancy went from eight hundred, pardon me, from one hundred percent, all the spaces were full at peak to eighty-seven percent. Just over one out of ten spaces opened up. That was a real victory. At peak, at one PM, and that's typically small towns around California, peak is lunchtime when you have the employees, and then you have everybody coming downtown at the same time, there's an overlap. But four-hour parking went from thirty-nine percent to eighteen percent. So this is about allocation of resources, of a scarce resource. Parking, especially on-street parking, is finite. You can increase the number of spaces to a point, but you're always only have so many spaces, and the question is how to allocate them. So here's, again, more data, these spaces, you know, they went to paid parking, people still park there, they just didn't park there as long, and they were happy to find the space. I'm going to bore you with more data, but in the end, longer-stay parkers, again, parked further out, and in, in the middle of the town, there were shorter stays. We didn't push people out, we just had the people who were staying for a shorter time We didn't push people out, we just had the people who were staying for a shorter time show up and park in those spaces. So in conclusion, again, we've gone over this for a long time. We've, we've recalculated your data, we went out there and counted again. Things have not changed dramatically, your turnover has gotten better, but we think that the city is ripe for comprehensive transportation management. It's a transportation issue, it's an access issue, it's a sustainability issue, certainly an economic development issue. Things are changing, you know, we work a lot, seeing the impacts of Uber and Lyft. I know I, I've spoken to a lot of stakeholders here, I think about a year and a half ago, two years ago, I called one of your stakeholders, and he said, you know what, I just took my first Uber ride to Santa Rosa. He said, it's here, and I said, really, even in Healdsburg, population ten thousand. So, you know, that's coming with autonomous vehicles, we're paying a lot of close attention to that. Things are changing, and management is flexible. Big capital improvements are not. So we think it's time for really comprehensive management here. That's our recommendation, but we also say, this is ultimately the decision of, of the stakeholders and, and the people here at Healdsburg. So that was four and a half years of parking studies and hopefully not too long. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Stefan. I think it's at least three times, I think I've.
And maybe.
Had you guys in here, that's just me, but maybe it's four. So I'm sure we have lots of questions up here, Councilmember Higley.
Just a couple of things, I do look forward to the public comment. J.C., I remember talking to you about this when I was out knocking, and. Yeah, it was, and you painted your garage door. Can you go back to the map with all the red? Yes, so, and while you're doing that, a couple of questions. So, um, for, I just want to get an understanding of how, what you're proposing. So, uh, people like J.C. or say you work at a hair salon and you're working all day, say at Brush. This is great for the customers to come in, now you have a spot, you can park. But if you're the hairstylist or, you know, you have to park longer, where is it you're proposing, are there adjustments? So I'm specifically looking at Foss Street, right there, next to Shed, which, which is, uh, you know, bright red. So not only does J.C. have her shop there, but there's real estate offices, there's rear access to Custos.
Right.
You know, Shed, and it's a pretty tight spot for parking. So when you have real estate offices or you have customers coming and going that may be able to utilize that spot, where is it that the people that are working there? Where is the suggestion that, are they parking in West Plaza? Or is the suggestion to move them up to lots one and two? I mean, how does, what are your thoughts with that?
Right, no, it's a good question. Let me start out by saying this, though. Right now, I mean, there are only so many spaces along that street, and we have to prioritize, prioritize who will park there. So to some extent, it might be, you know, employees, it might be visitors, might be employees on, on businesses and other blocks. It, it could be, could be somebody who comes to Healdsburg, I found a great spot, and I'm going to spend the whole day here, and I'm going to walk around, and, you know, I'm sorry to park in front of this business, but I'm having a good time. So the question is, who's, who's parking there now? There are only, there are only so many spaces. The shorter the stay, the more people that space can serve. Now, to answer your question, we look at the West Plaza lot, we did see some availability, we know that's not always the case. We see some availability, City Hall lot will be adding spaces, the West Plaza lot will be adding spaces. We see if you go out, and again, this is not for everybody, but if we go a little further east, more, most of the time, you know, it's all empty. We're not telling everybody to park out there, but if we have people who are parking all day, one or two of them, and we can encourage them to park further out, there's a problem already. The people wanting, needing to go to the real estate offices or Costa or, or the hair salon, they're already having a problem. If they're not, then there's not an issue. But our understanding is that when we've been brought in here, because we're observing, we're quantifying an issue, and people living and doing business here are seeing the same thing. So we're saying, to the extent where we see empty spaces in the green areas and the yellow areas, at least just not the red areas, we can move some of that, those cars, some of that demand, maybe even move a few of those people from cars to bicycles or other modes of transportation. But right now, no one is being served if they drive around here and they cannot find a space. If they have a meeting or a hair appointment, and they're taking time off, and they say, you know what, I pull up here, I cannot find a space.
Okay, a couple more questions. Do we have existing staff that can handle this, or are we going to have to hire new staff? And I'm assuming if we're hiring staff, this would be, and if it's a paid parking program, it would kind of feed itself. Is that kind of the proposal?
So it depends, it depends on what direction council gives. We would probably work with Walker Parking to develop a comprehensive management plan. Again, I think tonight, the hope, staff hopes that council can narrow the direction either to go to option one, two, or three, and then we would come back with a more detailed plan of what those would be. So it's either the status quo, increased enforcement or a management plan. A management plan, as someone was alluded to, would require some more staff involvement. We don't currently have that person on staff. So we would prepare what that would look like to council if, if council wanted to see that item come forward.
Okay, and then if I may have two more questions. On the local exemption, so this is something I, I thought about in terms of just how I, you know, I live in Parkland Farm, so I typically drive down. And so if I need to go to the ATM or stop by somewhere, I'd find a spot, you know, run to the ATM, do my business, and then go back to my Jeep. Now, it did hit me, okay, so what happens if there's a local exemption? Does that, or we have paid parking, does that mean that now I need to stop? What, find my parking spot, get out, go get a ticket, and come back and put it in my dash? Or if there's a local exemption, is it sticker-based, is it license plate reader? How would that work that's least intrusive to my day-to-day dealings in town?
Without going into the weeds, and there's a lot of different ways, I'd say, these days, the license plate is the permit. You know, as a resident, the way I see this working and the way I see other systems or variations of this, is you're a local resident, your license plate is in the system. They know that when they drive by, that you're a resident. The type of thing you're talking about with, with pay and display, you know, with a piece of paper, or even likely a hang tag, you know, something that you'd have to administer in City Hall. Those days are pretty well gone, and that would not be recommended. So ideally, this would not, this shouldn't be, oh, you know, one, one time, one time where you have to register. Your license plate would be in the system as a resident. That's what residential parking permits typically are. So again, in a nutshell, the license plate is the permit.
So the concept, right now, we have three-hour parking downtown. So say we say, all right, one hour free, two hour free, but as an example, let's say one hour for, for residents. I go downtown, I'm having lunch, and then, oh, look at the time. Then the idea is I pull up an app, and then I can add time.
You could do that easily.
But I don't need to go back and get a ticket, I can just do that from my phone.
No, you can do, really, you can do just about anything but from your phone right now. Yeah, the phone-based systems, you could do this with a phone.
Okay, and then last question, just, you talked about limos, tour buses. Where are they parking now? Do we have a designated spot that they park? Or has that not really been established? Or are they just kind of parking wherever?
So we have a bus pickup here in front of City Hall, up until the construction started. The bus pickup was just north of where the City Hall construction is taking place. And I've seen buses also drop off on the plaza where the city bus drops off, or the county bus drops off. But this is a designated place here for, for large buses.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Gold.
Yes, so you referred to five hundred private spaces that were unutilized during this peak period. Can you give me a little more detail about what you're referring to? Is, are you being, you mean like the Mitchell Center and the lot across the street from Healdsburg Bar and Grill? And I'm trying to picture, what, what are these private lots?
I didn't do, first of all, I don't, I don't want necessarily, I'm not sure I even know specific names. And I didn't do the fieldwork this time around, but I think we saw either individual lots that have a lot of spaces available. We want to be sure that they're not serving vacant buildings, because obviously if those get leased up, then the spaces are not available. I would say, I mean, I'd say they're all over downtown. I'd say to the north probably a little bit more, but my recollection is, I mean, that they're all around downtown. I mean, we could, we have the data, we have the data in there. I think, you know, this is on a block-by-block basis where we have private, public, the inventory. But I would have to, I, I can't tell you off the top of my head.
And how does it, how does it work to use these spaces? I assume that the people who own these lots want them for the convenience of their customers and not necessarily for customers of other businesses?
Sometimes they do, very often these lots are for employees. Very often these lots, and I, you may have touched on this a little bit in prior conversations, you know, in what we've talked about, I think, about parking requirements. You know, there's a certain number of spaces required for a lot of different land uses. They may be accurate, that you need that many spaces, they may be too many. Very often, you have people going to a business, an employee, and I know I do this sometimes myself. It's like, oh yeah, I have spaces behind my office building, but you know what, there's a, there's a space right on the street, so I'm going to take that one. So that takes that space away from somebody else, it also leaves that reserved space empty. So some of these spaces are for, are for customers. I'd say probably more of them are for employees, and for whatever reason, they're not being fully utilized. Now, one benefit of more comprehensive parking management or paid parking is you put a little pressure on the street. You say, if you need to park on the street, you will, but you know what, gee, it's paid parking, I don't want to pay a dollar an hour. I will go back behind the driveway and squeeze into the space beyond my building. It's required, I'm supposed to. So to the extent those spaces are available, and we think generally in most communities we go into, you know, there are plenty of owners who say, no, I need all my parking. But there are some who say, you know, these spaces do sit empty a lot of the time. And they may even say, you know, it becomes, you know, not exorbitant, but it becomes a financial transaction. The, the city will improve it, you know, it's, it's expensive to improve a lot. The city will sign it, the city will insure, insure it, and then there's a monthly fee that gets paid. So as for me as an owner, I say, gee, these spaces are just sitting there, I got to repair the pavement anyway, I'll give it a shot. And I think typically it's been month by month, and then if you want to, if you want to switch it around and you want to take it out of circulation, you can.
So the lot just becomes a public lot then? And that the customers of the business would just compete with anybody else to use the lot?
Again, I think to, you're not going to have the situation where the customers are going to compete. I don't see the business owners allowing that, and it's where we see consistently empty spaces, typically or mostly for employees. And, and they're, they're available. Again, it's up to the business owner, so, you know, and here's another way to look at it. It's, you know, if they're code-required spaces, that's one more, other thing, that's one other thing for the city to review. You know, are these spaces necessary? But if they're sitting empty day after day, the, the owner is not going to want to give up the spaces if they're going to inconvenience their, their customers. That's not what we see. What we see is, and I think, and we see in most cities, you walk around, you see a lot of empty surface lots, or at least surface lots that are half-empty. And we want to convert that other fifty percent of the asphalt into something productive, rather than pave over asphalt somewhere else in the city while these others sit empty for no reason. I hope I answered the question. If, I mean, it's, it's an agreement, everybody has to have a little sense and say, look, these spaces are available. I mean, the, the amount of money that the owner is reimbursed in this case to provide some public parking, and let me answer this, pardon me. This is not parking necessarily that then becomes available for everybody. Maybe I work in an office building over here, gosh, I can never find parking when I come downtown, so I have to park out on the street somewhere, but I come early to work every day, so I do. But now, you know, you know, the dry cleaner, just for example, or the office building next door has spaces available. So they become maybe my spaces, they become my colleague's spaces. If they're really inconvenient, they're not, they're, the person going to Costa's or to, you know, in a very nice restaurant, they're not going to park there, but the people who work at that restaurant may, and that will pull them off the street. So there are any number of ways you can allocate it, the main thing is, we don't want that space empty, we want a car in it because that car right now is parked somewhere where somebody else wants to park, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, I'm just kind of filling the gaps, but how you, how you get people into these other parking places, how they know that they're available, et cetera.
Right, and that's, I mean, if it's private, if we say, gee, there are a lot of, again, I bring it back to employees. There are a lot of employees out here who really don't have designated parking spaces. If we can match those up with available parking spaces, you know, the general public doesn't need to know about that. I just need to know that I have a space there. And this is where we get into, into a position in the city, somebody has to work out that arrangement. And it's, it may sound like a detail, it may sound a little labor-intensive, but it's a lot less labor-intensive than the other options of just building spaces. So that's what the person, if we could have, you know, one parking person who's dedicated to work all this out, it can go very smoothly, and it can be very efficient.
So just another question about this idea of, of if we had paid parking and some exemption for residents. So you pull into a parking place, it's eleven AM, and you know that you need to be out by twelve-thirty or whatever the time is. How, I mean, basically, the meter maid has to come along and notice your car, or is it, or is there some other, I mean, how?
You mean to make sure you move?
Well, but you get your an hour and a half free, and after that.
Oh, I see as a resident, yes. So if your license plate is the permit, then when somebody comes to I to enforce and they scan it, then the first time, you know, there might be a ping or, you know, I've been in these cars, but it notes and it says, okay, that's somebody with a permit. They're allowed to be here, the meter's not paid. This all goes through a handheld, not to get too far in the weeds. But basically we'd say, it's unpaid, but this person is allowed to be here the first time I drive by, unpaid. If I drive by whenever, the second time, the third time, and they're unpaid, whatever everyone agrees is an acceptable amount of time, then they might get us, then they would, should get a citation.
Okay.
As opposed to somebody from visiting, you know, it's, it's their big weekend away, they're willing to pay. I mean, we see this, the further someone comes, the more willing they are. And then, you know, the first time they drive by, they need their license plate in the system.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Yonkers.
Yes, good stuff, thank you for, for such a detailed presentation.
Thank you.
A few questions. So you spoke, you referenced Carmel. Can you talk about, they're kind of famous among circles here. As an example of, they had paid, and they reverted. Can you, can you talk to what happened with, with, with the reversion of their paid parking program?
I can. I would say two things, it took, I mean, they had decades and decades and decades of parking issues. It's a very dense city, it's a very popular city. They looked at changing their time limits. What they found is when they changed their time limits, I know what happened to me when I was on vacation, you park for, at the time, ninety minutes, ninety minutes was up, you couldn't find another space, you left town. You stopped shopping, you stopped eating, whatever you were doing. After a long period, they did decide at a pilot program to put paid parking on the street, and it worked. They did two things, they put paid parking on the street, they also lengthened the time limit. They wanted to give people the option, if you want to stay longer, you can, but you will pay, pay for it. You want, you know, because the timeline is ultimately arbitrary, but you do want people turning over. But they extended their time limits, and it worked. They had higher turnover, they had a little more availability, and their peripheral lots, the Sunset Lot, the, there were lots mainly to the east, people parked in, they started filling up. The other thing is that they had a reverse system, they were charging in the outside lots, and we said, don't do that. If people want to pay parking in the lots, wonderful, if they want to park further away, wonderful. So it worked, it did work, a lot, a lot of people were very happy with it. I will be honest, and I will say that there were, there were some business owners who wanted to park in front of their store. They didn't want to have to pay, some were paying all day to stay. But a lot of them objected to that, they wanted to park in front of the store. The consensus was employers should not be parking there. My understanding is that validations were given out because people said, well, aren't our customers, they're not going to like this. Validations were given out to the businesses to give to customers. Validation codes, so you could say, okay, put your license plate number in, you can park a certain amount for free. Let's just say, my understanding is that the validations didn't make it to the customers, and that in the end, the program was entirely used by, by people parking all day. And there was such an objection because, I mean, that's, that is not, we're here to tell you what works. The decision in terms of the proper policy is up to you. But I'd say that ultimately there was a consensus that there, that people, if they wanted to park in front of the businesses all day, they would park in the businesses all day. A few people, there was a lot of disagreement, but ultimately they felt it was, that program was not for them.
Okay, fair enough. Next, so you've mentioned parking lots at the periphery. Would you consider the West Plaza lot periphery? I mean, in some ways, I look at that lot and think, gee, that's, that's, that's pretty convenient. You can walk right across the creek, and it's a great spot to park.
And, and a lot of, much of the time, it is full. It's not quite periphery. You know, when we talked way back about, you know, adding parking or parking structure, and we said, look, again, you could add spaces there, but unless you do something around the plaza, that plaza is always going to be full. So it's, it's a little closer in, but we see that there are spaces available there some of the time. But I think we see, again, parking further out, it's not for everybody. But if we can just get a, if we could just get forty, fifty cars in the whole downtown of, what do you have there? Of eighteen hundred cars? I mean, we're adding spaces in the West, in the West Plaza lot, that would be a great improvement. So is that, there is some availability there, there's going to be more, that should be good. But the question is, we can keep adding availability, but we're not adding availability where we need it. It's physically impossible unless you're to, you know, God forbid, pave over the plaza. So the question is, how do we get just a few people to park further out? Some of that's the West Plaza, some of it's probably some of those other streets, and if we can, some of those parking lots that are, that are just sitting empty day after day.
Another question, so I think the, the premise of paid parking in, in terms of increasing, well, better utilizing our, our resources.
Right.
Is, it kind of hinges on two assumptions. First, you're, you're making the parking dear, you know what I mean? Like you're making it, you're imposing a cost. It happens to be that it's a monetary cost. It happens to be that it's a monetary cost, but it's a cost. It makes people think twice about using that resource.
Right.
And in this sense, in this example, you're using money as a way to make it dear.
Using that resource for a long time, but yes, I agree.
Yeah, okay. So it's, so paid parking is a mechanism for making it, making that, making the user of that resource think twice about using it. And then also, it generates revenue. So there are two, two, two functions to that. Can you speak to any other options besides, for making parking dear? For, for making people think about using the parking, shorter time limits is one thing, but obviously you just mentioned it has other, other unintended consequences and force people to keep on moving out of town. Are there other creative ways of making, of imposing a cost without actually making, making someone pay for it?
Well, right now, there's a cost also, and I would say it's, it is inconvenience and frustration in many ways. I mean, there is that, it's not all the time, but it's a lot of the time. I mean, I think the short answer to your question, are there other options? We think that these three options are pretty much it. You know, in terms of increased enforcement, you could go from three hours to two hours. But what that does is, that's a form of paid parking where, right now at three, I don't remember what your citation rates are, but say, at three hours and five minutes right now, you pay $40 for a citation? If you make it a two-hour time limit, then you pay after two hours $40. So we're saying pay incrementally, say, dollar by dollar. It's, it's, you know, you talk about making it dear, this is resource allocation, and it is land, and it is finite. And we're not, honestly, we really don't want people, we don't want people to pay a lot, we just want, it's really, we want it to hit home when people pay, when people stay too long. And we think there's a lot of that. And to the extent that it's not as many as, it's not as many people as some people may think, you know, we are still seeing that there's a shortage. And when you have a shortage, you know, even, you know, my wife's family remembers in the Soviet Union, they go to the store, there's nothing on the shelf. Here, you go to the street, there's nothing on the, at the curb. You know, it's the same thing, there's, there's too much demand, there's too little supply, how do we allocate it? So, you know, I'm not sure if the person in the audience, we had, I think at one of our meetings here, we had a vendor who said, why can't we just show people, you know, provide a parking guidance system? Don't pay for parking, but show them green where spaces are available, kind of like that map, and show them, you know, red where spaces are not available. And the problem with that, that does give people the information, and that's helpful, but it doesn't make the spaces available. And that's really what we want to do. So I think the short answer to your question, I mean, parking is in some respects like any other good, and there's a high, high demand for it. We see it, you know, in places where people like to be, so we're just trying to allocate that. And what was, and we're not just allocating space, we're allocating time. So what we want to do is keep the people who are parking eight, 10 hours, and may not be a lot of people, but if you park eight, 10 hours, that's eight or 10 cars that could have parked there for an hour. And those cars likely here are here, and they're looking for spaces.
Okay, fair enough. Can you speak to any, you mentioned rewards incentive programs. Can you give any other examples, concrete examples of incentive programs that you've seen be successful? So rewarding folks for, so instead of charging folks for paying for parking here, reward them for parking there.
Right, you know, there have been, we've seen a few smaller communities where they designate employee parking areas. You know, it's popular, designate an employee parking area. Typically, the problem is not that there's nowhere to park, except people don't want to park further out, which unfortunately, we need a few people to do. So we've seen, you know, prizes, rewards, gift certificates. The business community gets together and they say, you know, we will, maybe a few restaurant meals or, you know, gift certificate from a business. And then parking enforcement goes through, and they go through a lot, and they say, we'll go through here, you know, three or four times a month. We've seen this, Truckee had this for a while when they had a construction program. Glenwood Springs, Colorado, which is a resort community in the Rockies. And they would reward employee parkers for doing the right thing, for what they wanted to do, for parking far away from the customer spaces. And then they would have raffles, and they would give them gift certificates. I mean, it's a nice idea, I, I'm all for it. I often thought, we worked with another community in one country, and I thought, you know, can you have a kiosk with croissants and, and, you know, espresso in the morning? So people park out there, and it sounds a little ludicrous, but honestly, it is so much more efficient than bumping up your enforcement than building spaces. But it needs somebody to manage the program. And that's, again, that's what the revenue does. The revenue suddenly, you know, as we talk about all your options, as we talk about the future of transportation, right now, you don't have a way to implement that. And even the types of programs as little wild-eyed as they may sound, there's not a way to do that without parking, comprehensive parking management. That said, the key for this with the paid parking, it's resource allocation. The revenue will help you a lot, but the main thing is to allocate those spaces more efficiently because there's a problem right now.
Good enough. And then one final question, talking about wild-eyed ideas. You know, autonomous shuttles are here. I mean, they're on private prop, they're not, they're not operating on public streets.
Right.
But they're here, they're being used in, on college campuses and other, to, what, what, do you have any specific experience with those being, autonomous shuttles being used in?
Autonomous shuttles? I mean, when you run a shuttle system, the big cost is labor. So obviously, an autonomous shuttle would make that more practical. But I think it's more the challenge, the challenge is more that people, if they can, there, I think, if they can drive and park without getting on a shuttle, they will. So autonomous vehicles, I mean, we're really, you know, we do parking studies, and we look at traffic studies, and the impacts, and, I mean, even with Uber and Lyft, it's, it's a big deal. We see parking demand going down. We see, we see hotels in a lot of areas, there's not as much parking because people are taking Uber and Lyft, and there's a lot of benefits to that. Autonomous shuttles, I can't, the short answer is no, but I think we want to be prepared that, you know, all these things are out there, but people still have the desire to park as close as possible. We worked on a hospital near Santa Rosa, and the architect says, we need more parking here. In this big presentation, he circled the campus, and he said, no, actually, and then he just circled the front door. He said, we need it here. And of course, there was no physical way to provide it there. So that's really, in some respects, the question we're dealing with here, I think.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, I'd like to open it up for public comment. Welcome.
My name is Kimberly, and I work at Main Attraction, which is at 440 Center Street. Back a few years, there used to be a limited parking sign right outside the door, and they took it away. Ever since then, fast forward to now, I have 90-year-old clients that can't find parking in front of my store because it's not limited. They can park there all day. The employees from the next-door neighbors park there all day right outside our door. And I've asked for the sign to be put back in, three-limit parking, and they say that can't, can't be done, you need to change the municipal code. If we put in meters or parking meters or whatever, that's just going to push everybody out that far to us again. Because it stops at 424 Center Street, and we're at 440. But just, but we're a part, we do pay the tax to be a part of the downtown district, but we're not a part, in this study, we're not a part of that at all. And I was wondering if there's anything that can be done about that? Because we have cars parked in front of our store all day long. The bank has their own parking lot, the Mexican market has their own parking lot, it doesn't affect them. Their employees park in front of our door. Is there a way to address that? And put another sign in?
I'll, I'll take your, your question, give it to staff after everybody's had a chance to speak.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, J.C. Cardwell. Couple of things. I don't want to start with that one. So we talked about it three years ago, about getting a meter car reader, you know, license plate reader. Have we done that? Has it happened?
No.
Okay. Jordan Parking Lot, that was closed off because of Single Thread, the new restaurant and the hotel. So that probably gave us about 20, maybe 18 parking spaces. That's no longer there. Hotel Heelsburg III, where are those cars going to be? Has anybody figured that one out? I don't, I'm sorry if I'm rude, I don't mean to be, I'm just really frustrated. Mill Street, the new hotels and homes at the end, or at the beginning of town, where are they all going to park? Curious. Sagio, Sagio's going right along. It's a resort plus homes. When they come into town, where are they going to park? Just curious. The hotel and the homes that are going to be built across from Big John's. Where are they going to park? Just out of curiosity. The Bear Republic, lunchtime, forget it. And nothing against SoFi, but they do take up all this. So when we want to go to lunch at the Bear, kind of like no parking around. Oh, and this is like the topper. So David Wilhelm bought the parking lot across from HBG. I've heard rumors that he plans on building a hotel. Can somebody talk to me about it? Is it something that's actually in the plan? Is it just something that he bought the property for so that he could possibly build a hotel? And I think somebody else mentioned it. At what point are we going to stop building hotels in this city, in this town? You know, I've been here since 1986. There are people out there that have been born here that have seen the change. But I just see us, you know, Heelsburg, the Chamber of Commerce did a fabulous job promoting our little town for tourism, but it's gotten to the point where it's overrun. And maybe that's just my opinion, but that's how I feel. And I'm sorry if I am coming across as.
J.C., you've hit your three-minute time limit, I know there's a lot of people who want to see, but thank you. Yeah, welcome.
So I'm the owner of Clutch on the Square, and I think I'm quite representative of the business owners on the square. So through all the analysis, thank you, and I want to see one, which is the meters, impact of meters on grocery seed of the business on the square. So I haven't been able to see that, so if there's some conclusion from your previous study, I would appreciate that. And another thing I just want to throw here is a practice I have seen in other cities. So they use shared bikes. So like around the town, center, out of center town area, they have like a shared bikes for residents and also the travelers and tourists. So they, basically, they just download the app on their phone, and everyone just opens the app, and they get a fee, a very small amount of fee of shared bike. So I wonder if this could be a good one for Heelsburg, just very quick, sorry.
Thank you. Welcome.
I'm Lisa from Main Attraction, I own Main Attraction, I've been there for 35 years. And I love what, everything's going on in town, I'm not one of those kind that say, oh, it's changing. But the main focus seems to be that the plaza is only Heelsburg and only downtown. I'm part of downtown, I pay that downtown business, and it's all the way down to me. There's Shelton's, there's Braviss, there's Nail Salon, there's CBS, there's a goat, but we always seem to stop at the plaza, and it doesn't come down to me. I'm just as much a part of that. And that's where the frustration is, is that there used to be timed parking. I have my private parking for my employees and my two apartments upstairs, and I have a couple spaces for customers, but I don't have a lot of spaces. When I'm closed, I tell people, of course, customers, people I know, to park in my space, and they can walk downstairs, downtown. But I also have people that go to Shelton's that park in my spaces, and so it doesn't allow. So it's, and then the next door, the Mexican market, they tend to park in my spaces also. And I try to be really calm about that. So it's just really frustrating that my one little section from the entrance to Mitchell to Piper Street can't have some kind of time.
Thank you. Bruce, welcome.
I was at the parking study three years ago when Mr. Walker was here. And at that time, there was a request also for on, on-street paid parking. At that time, the community pretty strongly objected to it, and I think it kind of went away at that point. There were a lot of issues by, by the business owners, by residents, et cetera. So basically, I have a lot of concern about on-street paid parking. But in particular for the residents here, we're kind of paying the result of our success as a community. We have tourism, businesses are growing, every year, there's another 3%, 4%, 5% tourism. The town is getting busier and busier. And when we go downtown, we can't find places. But if there is to be anything, I think residents should have an exemption from any kind of parking fee for any resident or business owner, per se. The second is, I think there should be increased enforcement. You know, we have three hours, I don't see these, I don't see the guys going around that much. They're there, but, you know, I've, I don't always see it, I think more could be done there. And then the other is, it was brought up, I never know what happened, it was Employee Parking Program. Why hasn't there been some concerted effort with the chamber, with the downtown business group, with others to try and find some peripheral parking for their employees? In this report, it mentions 70 to 100 employees that are downtown, potentially taking up downtown parking. So why not make a concerted effort on that, really? Because if they're on the periphery, everybody benefits. We go downtown, the tourists, everything like that. And the other part is event parking. It's increased in the last few years with the hotels, especially on the weekends, it's just jammed. This west side of the Heelsburg Avenue is just full, absolutely full. The east side, on the other side, not so much. But I think there's, there's a parking lot shortage, a parking space shortage. I think we still need more parking spaces. It'd be good if you moved things around maybe, or you have more turnover. But this whole paid parking, I think, you got to be really careful with residents on this because this is, it's still kind of like our town, and we want to find solutions. But why should we have to pay the price or have to run out there after an hour and a half or two hours to check our meters or something when we're here? So those are a few main things that I see with that. The other is, I'm wondering, what is the parking in lieu fee? I don't know what that dollar amount is that's been quoted in the report. And then the other, there's a lot of missing numbers here. What's the potential revenue that's been expected or projected for downtown parking? I mean, we're dealing in kind of a nebulous area here unless we have some figures. And if you set up a program, then you have the cost factor.
Bruce, you've hit your time limit there, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Hello, I'm Alan Baker, I work with Cartograph Winery Downtown, and I just have to voice my opposition to the meters. I think it more strongly impacts locals than it does the guests. I think you have to consider, I mean, I know they would love to sell us a, comprehensive sounds good. But comprehension is also expensive, and then you have to start coming up with revenue sources. So they would love to have us be a cutting-edge client. I don't know that the people that are complaining about parking are really the type of people that are running everything off of their phone. So that's one thing. But you also have to remember that you can't just assume that everybody's going to be showing up downtown Heelsburg. If we're charging and you're driving down 101, well, I'll go to Ken in Windsor rather than stop and pay for parking in Heelsburg perhaps, because I'm on my way back to the city, and there's plenty of food elsewhere. Our competitors don't charge for parking. Other, other downtowns that are in the wine world, Sonoma, elsewhere, even just right out in the valleys. So I think there's, there's a competitive disadvantage to charging for people to park downtown for whatever that length of time is. So it's not like they have to come to Heelsburg to eat or taste wine or buy anything else. Traffic is already significantly down retail across the entire downtown area. I think we don't need to make that, we don't need to compound that problem. Thanks.
Thanks, Al. Brian, welcome.
Hello, I'm Brian Summer, and I think I'm the resident black sheep of the community. But I will say that since 4th of July, basically till last Friday, I park downtown every single day. I know that's being part of the problem versus part of the solution, but I can tell you, I never struggled to find a parking place. So either I have a lot better parking karma than. So either I have a lot better parking karma than other people or, uh, I'm maybe just understand where to park downtown or where parking is. Because I would agree, there's always parking downtown. Um, why do I live in town and also park downtown? I'm a single dad with three kids. So, um, I need to be able to get home to them whenever I can. It's kind of an insurance mechanism more than anything else. Um, but I, I, um, I look at the, the, you know, two comments that came up. And basically, I think there's a real communication issue. Um, obviously, a lot of, uh, you know, people that aren't informed about parking and hotels and things like that because I think H3 has more parking spots than they're supposed to have for the number of rooms they have. And I think that, uh, One Ten Dry Creek has a lot of parking, Sagio Hills, and even the New Forest, they all have underground parking. So, you know, I don't know how we get those, that message, uh, to people that stand up here and complain and then leave early. Um, so I will say that. But, um, I think you guys have done a great job with the new developments that have come online and, and really listening to the community and making sure that things like parking are very high on the priority list for new developments. Um, so I would say you guys have done a great job on that. I have a lot more to say, uh, but I'm going to give it a rest tonight. And I just say that I think you guys are doing a great job. When I look at this and I see the green areas, I mean, those are areas that we can always find parking in. And I would just say, kind of in my public position as a representative for the HTID, uh, we would really like to help the community by securing additional parking places that are privately owned and paying insurance for them potentially in the future. Um, and I think that's, uh, kind of what you had mentioned over behind, um, the worst or that little parking lot. That is a private parking lot and a lot of times it is very empty, especially on the weekend. I was down here, uh, Friday during the day and Saturday during the day, um, around lunchtime. Um, and people had parked, um, downtown and, and different areas. But I can see where the congestion is and, and how freeing up those parking places could really help, um, help, help the need. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Rosie, welcome.
I would hazard to, um, compete with that black sheep. I think I'm the black sheep here. Okay, so I got a list. I'm just going to rattle off real quick because I'm around town all the time and I got a lot of business-y things to do of all kinds of sorts. So here we go. The Hillsburg Hotel has a valet parking issue. Okay, they've taken over this lot and they've taken over the lot on Hillsburg and North. During the day, uh, during the week, when we need to go to the Bear and have lunch, they have empty parking lots because there's no tourists there. Um, they've also taken over this lot here at Hillsburg and North. And, uh, part of the rent that those people were paying, like the jewelers, uh, included spots for them who they do not have anymore. And so they have these, uh, this situation here where they, they had to find somewhere else to park. So they've been misplaced and not been refunded any money. Um, I know for a fact that Rich of Hillsburg Furniture and the Fitch Mountain Eddies folks lost their businesses due to the parking situations. Uh, Rich just closed and he said that he could not keep his doors open, which he has had them open for a long, long time, providing furniture and services to people like me who don't have money to go to, uh, you know, Saint Dizier and things like that, um, to get their furniture. And I don't like to go to Sears or to, uh, the, you know, Santa Rosa. I like to shop local and I, and I'm very, very adamant about that. Um, so I can no longer buy furniture in Hillsburg. So I'm going to have to figure, I guess, I don't know. Litton Springs is closed now and, you know, all of us that are not rich are kind of having to, like, I guess, hold on to our furniture. Um, so Mount, Fitch Mountain Eddies, that's a private lot, but they were pushed out for the parking. And a lot of people are upset about that. Um, the biggest problem I have is the lot next to the Gold Bloom. Um, we lost a lot of spaces there that the tenants and the employees used. The trees are overgrown, they are not being taken care of, the lot looks terrible. Um, I was watching people sitting on the benches the other day with these horrible branches hanging over their heads, just crossing my fingers, hoping none of them broke and hit these people. Um, who owns the lot? What the heck are they going to do with it? I hear they're going to build something there. They need to maintain their lot. Okay, let's see. Uh, my friends like Ari Rosen and Adam Burns, these folks are downtown moving their cars every three hours and disrupting their businesses. Um, there is a lot of poor paint and markings on the plaza. I was in the 15-minute spot in front of Rain Song today buying some shoes and, uh, ran into a bunch of folks like I always do and was there for like an hour. So nobody gave me a ticket, I would have paid it. Um, there's a lot of abuse of the motorcycle parking on the plaza, uh, in front of, uh, on Plaza and, uh, and, uh, Center, across from my bench, and the Hillsburg Avenue bus stop. A bunch of cars park in there. Uh, abuse of the handicap spots, which I have now a very soft spot in my heart for because I have to park in these spots. Um, you know, there's Lamborghinis and BMWs and all kinds of, they can afford the tickets, okay?
Rosie, uh...
So I got my, my time, that's, that's it. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Jim, welcome.
Mayor, council members, uh, Jim Hyde, Johnson Street. Um, a couple of quick comments, uh, because this is an issue that's near and dear to my heart in some places. I've spent a lot of my career working in cities like this, planning. And, and I just wanted to give a shout out to your, your planning team and the consultant. I've seen 30 years of these kind of presentations and analysis. And you're getting great counsel and really good rigorous analysis. A lot of other places don't get the benefit of it. So don't take what you've heard tonight lightly. It's really good stuff. Uh, the other thing I want to echo something that Stephen said, which is the technology and the thinking around parking has changed so rapidly in the last five years that we really are on a sea change of events. And I think it's important to kind of know that stuff that we've wrestled with for the last 15 years are really on the, we're on the edge with a lot of these other technologies that change things. But I would really encourage you to go with the option to go to the paid parking and take on the, uh, parking management plan. And I would say, don't let the enemy be the perfect, uh, yeah, the perfect be the enemy of the good. There's a lot of people who are talking about very individual, single issues. And we're talking about a comprehensive matter that really impacts the overall kind of network of downtown. So we need to get something going. We need to make it adaptable. We need to learn from it and need to be able to adjust as you go. But don't stall because it's something that's really important. And I would say it's important for three reasons. And one is it is best practice. The thing they're talking about are the best practices that are going on in communities that are focused on quality of life, a big issue that we hear a lot on, sustainability, managing their public resources in fiscal, fiscally responsible ways, and making, uh, places more walkable. One of the things I notice, I live five minutes from, I live two blocks from downtown. I drive my, ride my bike or walk down there four or five times a day. I don't see people having a hard time finding parking. But what I'm seeing more and more is people walking, riding their bikes, pushing their kids in scooters. That's what we want to see downtown is not more cars trying to park. We want to see a lively town where people are actually out walking and biking and scootering and all that kind of stuff. That's what makes a great town. And having paid parking is not going to change that. People will not go to Windsor because it's free and because Hillsburg costs money. They come to Hillsburg because it's a great walkable town that has a real sense of place. And that's not going to change with a dollar an hour kind of meter charge. The other thing is, I said, you know, fiscally, the city wouldn't think of not charging for water and sewer and electricity. Public, uh, parking is a public resource. If you take their page 248, there's 117 spaces outlined. Do the math, 200 square foot of space, that's 23,000 square feet, $100 a square foot for land downtown. That's $2.5 million asset that the community has in downtown. Shouldn't the city be trying to figure out some way to capitalize on that so that then it can create other benefits? And the benefits of that, this is an example. So the Business Advisor Group, which I'm a part of, for the roundabout issue, we were looking at alternatives for transportation. Monterey funds a free, uh, bus, electric bus that goes around town 15-minute headways seven days a week from their parking fees.
Jim, I'm going to have to cut you off, sorry.
Thank you.
Al, welcome.
Alan Cohen, Center Street. I would echo what Mr. Hyde just said. Um, I think there was a fabulous presentation and it's, I think, sure, it's nice to have the, um, reputation of having no paid parking, of not having paid parking. It feels good, it's nice for a small town. But we have this problem around the center of the town where there is no turnover. And it's, it's, uh, not environmentally sound to have cars circling and circling and circling, looking for parking, uh, greenhouse gases, a lot of traffic congestion. And as our consultant has said, it's just a question of getting a few open spaces. The amount of the, the, uh, cost of the paid parking doesn't have to be a lot, but it will push those employees to the edge. I love the idea of somehow trying to talk employees to getting out there. We've been talking about that for years and years and years and it just doesn't happen. It needs to be a little bit of a sec- economic self-interest. If you're, if you're going to park all day, you're not going to park right in front. Um, so we've got three choices. We can even leave it the way it is and, and it's basically not going to get any better. It's just going to get worse. Try more enforcement. Or try this new management program that, as Jim pointed out, can be flexible, adaptive, changes as they occur. Uh, I would support, uh, option three.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Berg.
Richard Berg. I just want to reinforce what both the last speakers spoke to, which is, A, streets are a public resource. So when we don't charge for their use, we're all subsidizing that, those of us who live here. It's not unreasonable to charge for parking. And if you think about the complaints that there's too much tourism, charging for parking isn't necessarily going to change that, but it certainly might put a curb on those who come only to use the plaza and not shop. But for people who want to eat at Single Thread or Campofina or shop at Osko or anywhere else in town, paying a dollar or a dollar and a half an hour to park is not going to keep them from coming to town and using, and shopping with our merchants. So I think you have to recognize that to implement a management plan in today's age of handheld technology, where, as was pointed out, you might be able to pay a little more if your residential permit time has expired or you can be notified that your space is, your time is up because you're using an app on your phone to both pay for the time and be reminded that your time is up. We are living in an age when technology will simplify the implementation of everything from employee parking, resident parking, and the notification that you're going to get a citation. Because the parking attendant, the person circling to post citations on cars, can also be notified since he has in fact scanned the cars and noted a time when they're parked. So technology can really simplify the implementation of a management plan. But it can also provide residents all the benefits that people are concerned about losing. It's a systems problem and it affects everything else in town also. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Mark McMullin. I live in Parkland Farms. Uh, I had a number of notes, have been covered by a lot of people here. The thing that I think needs to be looked at in this parking situation is that we need to look at transportation as a whole in this city. And parking is part of it. Um, one of the solutions perhaps is to have the workers who work downtown park further away. Uh, talking about the, the shuttle service, you know, a 15-minute shuttle that goes around. Perhaps we can use the community center. Get people far away from downtown, have a, have a shuttle that is starting to run from that area downtown. And perhaps residents would take it too. You know, we, we just need to have an idea that we're going to be looking at transportation as a service for parking, for bikes, for walking. We need to look at improving, you know, the, the, the sidewalks and the, the walkways in the city. Um, one thing that I do want to talk about is the, uh, future. And that is the idea of autonomous cars, not just autonomous shuttles. Within the next, uh, 10 years, we're going to see those, those cars here. And those cars are not going to want to have to park right downtown. They're going to want to park somewhere else. They will be off and they will drive by themselves and then come pick people up. Um, that's the future. That is going to be part of it. Our growth in the tourist rooms, I went to the sustainability, the tourism sustainability, and we're going to double, according to their, to their chart, the amount of, uh, hotel rooms right now in 2017. We have 469, they say. And in 2020, there'll be 869. So we've got a lot of people that are going to be coming up. And tourists will be coming from the airport, from the city. They will be bringing those autonomous cars in the future. And we just have to think of, how are we going to handle that when it comes about? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Jim.
Just quickly, Tim Meinken again. I think we need to look at incremental steps. We're going from today, a, a system of 1950s. We literally chalk tires still in downtown Hillsburg, which is kind of a hard to believe in, you know, in this day and age. Uh, things are going to change quickly. We now have handheld, we have lots of easy enforcement things. I think as we move forward, we look at autonomous cars and all the other technology, we ought to look at incrementally moving forward. What can we do the next few years? Because I think paid parking downtown is going to be a very negative to, to the citizenry of this, of this town. So I think there's some steps we can take that we haven't taken advantage of to move our technology from the 1950s to at least to today and think about the future.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, Tim Unger, Plaza Street. I'm, I'll repeat myself, uh, from what I said in 2014 about the last Walker study. Great piece of staff work. I've seen a lot of presentations in my life. This is really high-quality stuff. And, uh, it's the second time we've seen a very similar conclusion. The recommendation for option three is the best balanced choice with the least number of, of adverse consequences for what's going to provide the greatest benefit at the time of need the city has to date. The question I have is, how much money's been spent on parking studies since 2008? And what's the aggregate total of that that's gone to Walker? I think we need to act and not kick the can down the road any longer. And I believe the amount of money that's been spent is, will be surprising when we hear that total. The B of A parking lot is terribly underutilized. Is there an opportunity to cut a deal with B of A? Maybe we, we can ask them to take a community, uh, interest and, uh, be generous with whatever they're willing to compromise on in terms of a cost or a rental. Lastly, have we resolved anything with SoFi? That seemed to have been an inflection point when they came into town. I understand they're looking to ex- to expand their, their call center, which is going to exacerbate the problem. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, seeing no more public comment, I will close, Marilyn.
Good evening. I, I thought you were looking at someone that was walking up. Um, Marilyn Joyce, um, I just want to echo, uh, what's been said by several people toward the end here. And, um, also, um, my kudos to Stephen from, uh, Walker. It, it's so sensible. Uh, and I would, um, I would go with option three, a comprehensive approach. Now, when he was talking about, in, uh, transportation, uh, options, he wasn't, um, uh, recommending that particularly. But I still think that that is a viable option to utilize the community center lot, to use shuttles. And maybe, um, for both employees and for visitors. And, and maybe we need to have, um, something sexy. Uh, so, so we call it the, you know, it's a, it's a solar-powered, um, shuttle. We call it the Latte Electric. Or, um, my favorite is the, the Burgabout. Um, probably Burger Bus isn't, you know, that's not very sexy. Anyway, um, in terms of Uber and, um, and, and other issues, uh, I know San Francisco is having an exponential, um, parking problem because the Uber drivers, et cetera, are hovering in parking spaces. So that would be something that we'd want to pay attention to. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment and, uh, bring it back. We had several questions. First one that came to mind, is there an effect on grocery seats of businesses when parking, meters, metered parking is implemented? when parking meters metered parking is implemented? Stefan, is there any wisdom on that?
We're only going to recommend charging for parking in a place where we think people are still going to park. Obviously, nobody's served if the space is empty out. So, I mean, a simple calculation, and we haven't dug into it, but we worked with another city in the region, and they estimated that that average visitor who parked for two hours spent, I believe, $25. So they said, they did the calculation for us, you know, we talked to them, and they said, well, they said, right now, we have one person sitting in a space for a long time, space essentially not available. Even if it's two people for four hours, we know that those people are probably not spending money. They're there for other reasons. So they said that each time a car turns, they generate more revenue. So the idea was that four turns in a space that was really not turning at all, you know, theoretically, you could say, conservatively, $25 to $100. You know, we're not promising that right now, but the idea is that it's like a restaurant, and, you know, we're not in the restaurant business, but we know the whole, in a restaurant, you want tables to turn. In parking, you want spaces to turn, especially if they're serving customers. So we would say the gross the gross impact would certainly be positive. We think it'd be very positive. That's the whole idea behind this.
And then another question was about new construction of various businesses. I think you mentioned H3 and the Mill Street. That, of course, has all parking feet included within those projects, Saggio Hills as well. There was a bike share program. There was another question about that. We just approved a bike share program, and it's going to be starting here real quick. So that's great. The in-luffy, what's our current in-luffy for?
So do you want me to answer those questions from the beginning? Or, okay, so with regards, I think you answered the H3 question. H3 has to park itself. I think there's 50-odd parking spaces underneath that. With regards to the in-luffy, back in 2014, as part of Walker Parking's work, is we implemented an in-luffy, a two-tier in-luffy, one for existing businesses which had a higher use, meaning if you have an existing business that goes from, say, an office space, which has a certain parking requirement, to, say, a restaurant, which has a higher parking requirement, there'd be the in-luffy to cover the differential is around five, I want to say between $5,000 and $7,000 per space. If we had a new business coming in, meaning it was brand-new construction, and they couldn't park their the in-luffy, I want to, I believe, was somewhere in the $12,000 per space. However, for hotels, we didn't, we weren't, we don't allow them to buy themselves out of that requirement. The hotels have to park themselves because we know those folks are usually staying there. That's what the in-luffy piece was. And did you get the rest of that, Maya, that question?
I was just going to go back to the development question on how our developments are mitigating their impacts. For example, the 110 Dry Creek project, the hotel that's across the street from Big John's, and this is similar to future projects such as Quaker Hill. We've been implementing conditions of approval that so the hotels are to provide an on-demand shuttle to their guests that desire to go to the hotel to help mitigate that parking impact that we assume would happen as a result of those oncoming developments. And we anticipate a very similar operation, both with Saggio, and, like I said, the Quaker Hill that would be coming online as well.
Thank you.
There was also the question from, I believe, Kimberly from Main Attraction, and I forgot the other name. I apologize. We have been in communications with them for some time, myself, Public Works Director Salmy. I'm not, I don't, I'm not sure if the police chief has been in communications with them. The challenge we have is, I believe, the three-hour parking zone ends right before their business. We talked about simply just adding another three-hour zone to the rest of that block face. The challenge becomes enforcement. We really need to amend our land use code, I believe, to allow that section to be able to enforce the three-hour parking. So it wasn't as simple as just putting up a sign and say, we're going to start enforcing now. I wish, again, I wish Brent Salmy, our Public Works Director, was here. He could speak to this better than I can. But I believe that was the biggest issue, was we have to go back through the planning commission, the land use code amendment, come back to council to adjust that three-hour parking piece of it. So that was part of that question. And I believe the question was, how much have we spent with Walker Parking since 2008? I don't have that information. If I may, I can certainly get that to council. I'd work with our finance department to find out what that has been. I know we have spent, we worked extensively with Walker Parking to do the in-lufies. There's also, staff is working through parking requirements for development that Walker Parking did back in 2016, 17, which staff is working through at this point, and of course, this study as well. So that answers that question. And you mentioned the bike share program. I believe we're still trying to kick that off on September 22nd, September 22nd. So we'll have that program in place by then, and that's an that's an app-based program as well. I'm trying to go through the questions. I believe those addressed those questions. And there was a question about the Jordan property. That's a private parking lot, the dirt lot. We don't have any any influence over that piece. I think that answered the questions.
Okay, so we'll bring it back for discussion now. Who'd like to go first? Vice Mayor Mansol, go ahead.
I refrained from asking questions before because I just, there was so much. It was getting into the weeds big for me. I'm a, I'm a, I like to know the values, and I understand the value is parking, okay? But I also want to talk about some of the things that you share, because I really do enjoy your presentations and really appreciate your your methods and how you articulate, how you measure things and the numbers. One of the things you said was, it's less about adding and more about management. And then another thing that struck me was just this issue of what gets measured gets managed. And I look at that not only just from parking, but just space, right? We look at housing the same way in this town. There's people that just want to build more. They don't want to manage. They want to build. They think if you build enough, it's going to get better because you build more, people have more room to live. It's special here. We have a unique situation. We're desirable. The plaza is the heart of our town. So I absolutely understand people's concerns about wanting to get the plaza area, particularly around that sacred spot where the water fountain is and the gazebo, and everybody wants to be right there, and no one wants people circling. But it is, in fact, the town square. It is our town, the people that live here. So I have a really hard time wanting to meter that for people that live in this town. I have a real hard time with that. Place matters, and not just parking spaces. Place, what does it feel like to go into my town on a daily basis and experience going, if I can still get down there and not be on my bicycle, and go to the bakery and sit in the bench? And again, this may be totally romanticized, and no one wants to go there because we're moving fast and get on the train, Bridgette. Get on the, get on the train. We got to do it. We got to make this profitable, and we got to bring money into it for everybody, including the people that live here. So when I look at all that, I understand the options, but, you know, they're not options that necessarily have to be compartmentalized by option one, two, three. And I really don't see it as, well, 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 you know, door number one, door, I just don't get that. So when I was listening, and I took a ton of notes, I really believe that the people that live here know these places. They know it because we live here. People can cite, for example, Quaker Hill was brought up. I didn't even know Quaker Hill was being developed, but I know our planning building director just mentioned that. It's like, wow, I want to know about that place, because that is a place that, if it gets developed, Saggio will affect parking down here because people that live in Saggio will come down here in their cars. They're not going to walk from Saggio. So Saggio Hills does impact, in my opinion, it will impact parking downtown. But as far as looking at what familiarity breeds, it breeds familiarity. It allows us to say, what about this parking lot? What about this space? So I think if I'm going to go any option, because that's where we're headed, is we got to find an option. I like parking management. I think that we can do some more people-oriented ways to address the problem. I like ambassadors. I like the Chamber of Commerce and other business people taking responsibility and wanting to support a more friendly way to help people figure out where to park. I also don't understand why we haven't figured out SoFi. I mean, I don't, I just don't get why we haven't figured that out. I'm concerned that that many people have come into town, and they could literally first come, first serve it, get into that west parking lot, or come over here and take up so many spots. So I'm more interested in looking at option three, but minusing paid parking at this moment, only because I want an incremental approach. Unless, I would favor more the the business people and the people that live here having an opportunity to be exempt from paid parking, because I feel, once you make that shift, it's going to shift the way people feel about going downtown anyway. And I feel like the people that live here shouldn't be paying for parking in a town that they actually pay taxes for, that they are, that's their square. And that's just how I've always felt about the square. Raising my kids here, living here, I just feel like it's a hometown, not a town to make people that live here pay for parking. So the paid parking option aspect of option three, or a part of it, I don't support. I do believe that we have to look at changing the way we direct people to park, and I feel like we could do a better job of enforcement. So I would go more for stricter enforcement and looking at option three minus the paid parking at this time, and looking at what we can really do to be more concerted with our business owners, and look at, you know, the offer from a businessman, HDID president, Mr. Sommer, if he wants to help us figure this out. I just think we're a small town. There's no reason why we have to actually change that flavor of coming downtown and being able to park and figure this out. And and again, I just, you know, as I listened, I really tried to understand all the different complexities, and I just feel like there's so much change going on in this town. And if you change downtown, specifically our downtown core area to paid parking for residents, I think it's going to shift us, and I don't feel comfortable with it right now. So that's the part I don't like, is the paid parking. But option three, all the other things sound really good. I mean, look at them. There's great opportunities for changing behaviors based on business owners taking responsibility for their employees, including big business owners, like, including the SoFi issue, employee parking programs. So I could support option three minus paid parking. And then I see, you know, other things in options two and one that work as well. But I guess what I don't like about being in this job is these options, you know? I feel like we need to mesh things sometimes based on what we know, and we know our city. I mean, a lot of us know these parking lots, and these places that we claim there's parking spaces, and there aren't, or whatever. And so I would like it to be not paid parking, but option three with management and different incentives and ways to to do a better job of managing rather than charging. That's my my input.
Counselor Neokis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, wow. First of all, yeah, I, while I do appreciate the professionalism that you bring, I really do hope that this is the last time we have the opportunity to talk with you.
Understood.
You know, I, boy, I don't know. I, I feel like we've got a lot of low-hanging fruit that we can that we can pluck before we necessarily have to go down to the paid parking route. But I do think that it's worth looking at the paid paid parking to really evaluate that as an option, see what the, you know, the costs and benefits of a paid program. But in the, but I think what, in the meantime, I'd like to see, I'd like to see us address more of those of those low-hanging fruit options, such as, you've heard me say, you know, how many times, increasing bike and ped, you know? So if we were to convert one of those parking spaces to a bike only with eight, with eight bikes, I mean, that's that's eight parking lots that all of a sudden people can use. So, you know, so bike and ped as an option, as one of the low-hanging fruit options. Another low-hanging fruit option is working, is really kind of helping, doing what you can as a city to help facilitate the the better use of of private options, not just in the sense of the private, utilizing private lots, but also working with the private industry, the HJD, the Chamber of Commerce, ways of encouraging, being constructive and proactive with getting employees out of that center. I like that idea of the the incentive. I'm almost kind of thinking, like, there could be some sort of a, look, if you park in this area, you get the benefit of going to a party once a month, or once a quarter. You know what I mean? It's like it's like the parking, the periphery club. I don't know. But but something interesting that that could, you know, and there's, it wouldn't take a lot. You're talking about a few blocks of of walking. And I think that that there's probably some, I feel that there's a lot of a lot of room for the for the private community, the business, the Chamber of Commerce, the HJD, the businesses to step up and work with us, with the city, to figure out solutions that don't that that don't require paid. I think it would be interesting to look at at better at better enforcement. You know, I was struggling with this two-hour, three-hour, but one of the things that that came up was, you know, look, you have three-hour, but that ends up being four-hour, realistically. So if we were to restrict it to two-hour, maybe that would increase that, that would increase the turnover. And still not really. In fact, people will still save three hours. It's not going to, I would bet that it's not going to make make a huge impact on the on the businesses. Also, it would be interesting to find out what, what, who, who are, who are those people who are consistently overstaying their their parking? And is it, is it the same person over and over again, or the same group of people? And if so, then this graduate, I think you mentioned the graduated penalties. So, you know, the first time, maybe, maybe it's, maybe it's a slap on the wrist. The second time, okay, come on. Third time, enough already, right? I think there are plenty of people who are who are who look at that as a cost of doing business, and I think that's wrong. So I look like, look at at some sort of graduated penalty system. And, but you know, I also think that ultimately what it comes down to, there's, you've given us some great analysis, but you know what? It's a snapshot of one day, two days, one on Thursday, one on the, on the, you know, weekend, weekend, right? I, I would love to see the the license plate reader. I think that's going to give us some really important enforcement options, but it's also going to give us some really fantastic data. And to me, that's going to be, that to me is really the, as a, as a, as a decision-maker, the more data I have to make fine-tuning, fine-tuned adjustments, the better. And so I would be, I think ultimately, you know, focus on this, on the low-hanging fruit. I'm willing to entertain the idea of a pay and look at what those options are. I think we should, because I think that if we don't address those those low-hanging fruits, it's, and we don't have that engagement from the from the community to solve these problems with constructively, then I think we've got to go down that path. So, and then the license reader. Thank you.
Councilmember Gold?
Yes, thank you. So the key takeaway I get from this study, if you permit me to distill it down, is that you're basically telling us that the only way we're really going to improve turnover in the downtown area of parking places, and also finance a comprehensive parking study, is through paid parking. That seems to be the kind of the focus of the report. It's hard for me to embrace it, not because I think it's particularly a hardship for people to pay or even that much of a hassle, but just because it feels urban. If we, if we started with a paid parking program, we'd be the only community in Sonoma County that has one, except Santa Rosa. So that's kind of a little bit of a hangup that I have with that. On the other hand, when I was canvassing, I did talk to residents who said that they would welcome paid parking if it meant they could stay longer, because they said when they came downtown with with visitors, they'd want to go to lunch, they want to go shopping, they want to relax, and that even three hours didn't feel like an adequate amount of time, and they wouldn't mind paying if if they could not have to have that concern. So I guess I'm sort of interested to know how much the the public would embrace or object to a paid parking downtown. I would certainly only want to look at it if there was the kind of exemption that we talked about for residents for a certain period of time, so that that they, you know, they wouldn't have to deal with it on a daily basis. So I guess I'm just saying I don't embrace it. I'm not totally closed to it. We can consider it as an option, and I'd like to look at other options as well. Thank you.
So you would sum it up as option three?
What's that?
Option three with a kind of maybe on the?
A kind of a maybe, yeah.
On the paid part?
Right.
Same, Joe, was kind of like what you were talking about?
Yeah, I guess it's a, it's a, maybe a phased, two, two phases of, well, option three. Phase one being low-hanging fruit, no, no paid, and then phase two, paid.
Okay. Mr. Hagley?
A couple of thoughts. First, I, the concept about feeling or feeling urban, I don't think is necessarily a bad thing. I think the bike share is very urban, and I think that's a very positive thing that we're doing. You know, again, thank you for a great presentation. A couple of things jumped out. You know, I saw statistics for peak demand from 2018, 2014, and 2017, and the weekday went from 61%, 63%, and then 68% 2017. What I found interesting, and the kind of, to me, was a red flag, was the week, the weekend, Saturday went from 67% occupied to 63%, and this year down to 57%. And again, people like to read things into numbers, but to me, I look at that, and then I look at the presentation, and some of the issues we're having, where we have 38% of the parking spots being occupied by people over four hours between 9:00 AM or by people over four hours between 9:00 AM or 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM, or I can't remember the exact timeframe. But to me, I look at that, and what can we do to help these businesses get that turnover? And so for me, I look at this as a positive for our local businesses. When you're talking about a paid parking program, or some kind of parking management plan, we heard some, from a couple of businesses that, you know, we talked about, you know, we just can't change the signs to, to three hours. So I like the idea of doing a comprehensive management plan that we can look at, that takes a look at the time limits all over town, and how we can adjust those. Like, we talked about with J.C. Ware, or the salon, where you have somebody that works, that doesn't necessarily want to walk from the B of A parking lot to brush, where she's gonna work all day, and, you know, what if it's raining? And so there are real considerations about, we need to make sure that we're not forgetting the employees that, for one reason or another, are taking up those spots. And so I would like to see a management plan that really takes that into account, and maybe reallocates what we have here with the overlay of the paid parking concentrated on the downtown. Couple things, you know, there are some numbers, I guess we really didn't talk about numbers in terms of what could potentially be generated from this. But, you know, a couple of things, if the parking revenue, there are a number of things where we have options where, number one, it should be paying for itself. We shouldn't need to take on additional staff and pensions and everything else to do a, a parking program if there's no way to kind of have it pay for itself. You know, the other thing is, like I said, and there's another gentleman from Parkland Farms, we're doing a better job of extending the bike path north, but that's a big thing. Whereas my kids get older, we can ride into town, and that, I know, takes a Jeep out of a parking spot for sure. So those kind of things to get, Parkland Farms, Rivers Bend, and some of the outline communities, so that it's easier to access downtown, is definitely gonna be a plus. I look at our downtown, part of the reason we're such an attractive town is because it's a walkable town. And I look at things like, if we have the revenue generated from this, depending on what that is, and I would like to see a report, a percentage allocated to finishing the, the cherry site. So now we have another community meeting space that relieves pressure on the plaza, which, when you have all this pressure on the plaza, it actually hurts the retailers down there because all the parking's taken from, whether it's food vendors, or streets are closed. I want to be able to still have those events, but maybe they're moved off the plaza, a little less pressure on the plaza, so that we can encourage the, the walking and people strolling around. And I would want to look to, to you for recommendations on what that should be, the three minute, or three hour time, two hours. You talked about shorter, longer, and, and I would hope that there's some input from our local business community about how we can get that turnover, to get people in, buying the cases of wine, buying the clothing, whatever, and then somebody else comes in right after that. Finally, the shuttle trolley, to me, that's, you know, HTID has offered to do that. I, I would support, I, I would rather look to HTID to do any kind of a shuttle. I think those are my, oh, paid parking. I think it's really important that we have some form where the residents are exempted from having to pay. And especially if, from a practical standpoint, I can pull up, or anybody can pull up that lives in town, go to Downtown Bakery, and you don't have to get out, go do the paper transaction, come back, because it's just annoying. And it'd be so nice to just be able to roll up if it's two hours, three hours. Again, I'll look to you for the recommendation on what that should be. And then if my lunch is going longer, and I want to stay longer, I can pull out my phone and add more time. And full disclosure, I have never used a parking app. I go to San Francisco, and I, you know, I pay with my debit card, and it says I can use the app, but I don't even do it. So I understand the concerns where people have about apps. It will be something I will learn, and especially for here in town, if I can add a little bit of time, I think that would be a, a big plus. So I, I support number three with free parking for the residents, up to whatever that limit is, or, you know, whatever you would recommend, with a keen focus on the impact on the businesses, and with the turnover to maximize the, the positive impact for our local businesses, and a focus on how do we keep the employees not quite in the plaza, but close enough that they're not walking in the dark for five blocks to get to their car.
Thank you. You know, I, I think option three is also a, a good one, with the free parking for the residents. You know, I kind of, I, I feel what Alan was saying about, you know, folks driving by and be like, oh, you know, we could go to Windsor for free. But I think if, you know, Stefan is an expert on this stuff, and his company's done a lot of studies on this. I think if you're able to push the parking and make it so that there's more availability right in the downtown where people want to go, now people are gonna think, well, you know, I can go there, and I guarantee a spot. Whereas now, you're not necessarily in the, in the red zone there. I mean, I, I know as a resident that I can go to all the secret spots, and I see a lot of them are exposed here. Thank you, Stefan. Yes. But, you know, I, I think it's, I think it, it warrants taking a look at it further. And I think we have, it looks like we have a consensus up here to, to look at the number three with the resident. I think the one thing that, that I think resonates with everybody is that resident, free parking for some amount of time. I don't know what that time is, but I think that's pretty important. You know, that would be, that could be really nice, just to make, make the, the local folks feel special, you know? And, right, because we are special.
Can I also add that? I think there's a, I'm getting, getting a sense that there's, making that user friendly is, is super important. And I think particularly, I know, I know that, 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 that the technology is, is evolving daily almost. But you know what? There are still a lot of folks who are very anti-techno, or at least, hmm, technology's challenged.
Yeah, I mean, I think you have to have, I think there are systems out there that kind of run the gamut of, of what people are used to, you know, the kiosks, things like that. And I'm sure that, that we'll come back with something that...
I would anticipate having multiple discussions on this. I think the next piece would be to work with Walker and staff to the review councils, all the council comments, all five council comments, and address those when we come back. With the, the next phase of this process would be what that plan may look like, with some hard, harder numbers attached, including revenues and expenses, what a, an introduction program may look like, and those types of things. Like, I've heard the term low hanging fruit a couple of times, and I think if we could look at those items as part of this process, we'd absolutely do that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there's some value. I mean, we've heard a lot of things that are not paid related. And there's also some other revenue sources that are kind of floating around out there. So, you know, I know that Mr. Mason over there is gonna write his story, and Mr. Hawley as well, and, you know, Healdsburg City Council considering paid parking. Well, that's true. But, you know, there, we need to, all of these things that we're talking about, we need to figure out a way to pay for them. And there could be all kinds of low hanging fruit, but unless we, unless we find that revenue source, it's gonna come, it's gonna displace something else. So I think that's a really important piece of this that we need to keep in mind. And there are more sources of revenue than just the meters. That's what I want to say.
So I think the action, the requested action is by motion.
So before you do that, is there any way to know the, the actual cost of the present system of enforcement in terms of our parking officer? Because I, I get asked that a lot, including the vacation rental enforcement. I just get it all the time. I just was trying to figure out how much that costs us right now.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Council. So we have three part-time parking enforcement officers, at a cost of 60, approximately $60,000 annually. We also have a full-time police technician. One of her duties, among many others, is parking enforcement. I would estimate she might spend approximately 25 to 30% of her time dealing with parking enforcement itself and parking enforcement-related issues. She's a full-time employee at a cost of over $100,000. So if you add, say, another $30,000 to it, I would say that the cost of just the staff associated with parking enforcement is about $90,000 annually. And then, of course, you have the vehicle citations themselves, other incidental expenses associated with the program, chalk, although I would argue that's more like a 1930s than 1950s. I think he was being generous, so.
So Chief, if we move down the road to actually do license plates, what would those, I mean, that money would obviously, those jobs would be obsolete? Is that correct?
No, all the, all the license plate recognition technology does is increase the efficiency with which the person marks. The chalking is cumbersome, it's slow. The license plate reader, the person just, employee just drives up the street, and it's automatically taking information in on the vehicles and how long they've been there. So it's a much more efficient way. You would increase the number of citations if you were to implement a automatic license plate recognition. Revenue from parking citations tends to be not significant. Here in Healdsburg, we don't get to keep all of the revenue from a ticket, 40% of every ticket we write. And keep in mind, the three hour zone's a $40 citation per violation, so it's not an expensive citation. And 40% of that is going to the state, county, a small portion to our third-party administrator, mostly to the state and county. So revenue was $77,000 the last fiscal year, about $65,000 the fiscal year before that, about $70,000 the fiscal year before that. It's definitely trending upward as we have with city managers' support and increased amount of parking enforcement in the last few years.
So what you're telling me is that we have a $40 a day ticket, so you could stay there all day and get $40?
Yes, ma'am.
Ticket. So you're pretty much $40, stay on the plaza, be there all day. So could we raise that price?
Council can do that, yes, ma'am.
That, that would be a first step in a low hanging fruit spirit, to raise the price of a ticket?
I, I would, I would point out that our, our fine for the three hour zone is, is pretty standard. It's not, I wouldn't consider it high, I wouldn't consider it low. For a city our size, I mean, if you go to the big city, you pay twice that much for a parking violation. But for a small city our size, looking at Sonoma County, the 40 is, is about normal.
I'm sure that that could be considered as part of it.
Love is talking to the people that are actually doing the work. That you're, I mean, you have people that are actually doing the work. So I understand, it's really great to have all this, and I really respect it, but I love knowing who really knows it, which is the people that are walking around with the chalk. I was just curious.
We've got one right there.
Yay.
Raise your hand.
It's always interesting to me, because again, I hear about sensitivity to employee, sensitivity to the downtown for locals and all that. But I just, I'm curious what is noticeable and what you can actually make sense of when you're on that path of making those marks. You know what I mean? There must be some valid, it must be beyond a subjective realm, that you could actually get some good information from the people that are doing the work. So, hope we get to talk to them more.
So we need a motion to, somebody like to form a motion based on our discussion?
Well, I'd like, I guess I'd like to clarify, I mean, to your point, it's not just, we're saying, come back with, with, with a paid parking plan. I think there, I want to be clear about what we're asking to do.
So what staff is going, what, what staff would do, and the reason we need a motion is just to need some clarity. So however, however council wants to provide that clarity to staff, typically, a motion is the, the best way to do that. But we need clarity as far as what, what you're asking us to do. It, it appears what you're asking us to do is take a look at option three. We're not implementing option three. We're bringing back option three for council to consider and comment on in more detail. As part of that process, we'd reach out to the business community, the chamber, and so forth and so on. But we would come back with what a conceptual plan would look like, and then at that point, receive further comment and refine that plan in more detail potentially, and then come back again to determine what plan we would want to implement, if any, at that point. I think, I think what we're asking for tonight is not to move forward, adopt a parking management plan and paid parking program. What we're asking to do is, okay, we've looked at three options, we've narrowed it down to this one, I want more information, I want a paid parking program would look like, and all the parking management pieces that come with it.
So I'm having a real issue, because when I look at option two, I don't see why increased enforcement isn't under management. I don't know why that's set up in a separate category. Wouldn't that be part of a management system, that you would increase enforcement? Why would that be compartmentalized over to an option two?
I think option two is, is almost entirely increased enforcement.
Well, yeah, but I mean, that's what I'm saying. I don't want anything to be entirely. Let's try different approaches for management.
I mean, when you have a paid parking system, just for example, I mean, you increase enforcement because suddenly, instead of...
Okay.
Every time you, your, your enforcement people are at least twice as effective. So that is a big part of the enforcement. Essentially, it's an enforcement measure. That's a lot harder to evade than it is when you're just chalking tires, or even with a license plate recognition without, without a meter there.
So are you good, Brigitte?
I just want to clarify that option three is about looking at programs, and that's the direction we all agree we want to do, I think. And then we're gonna, I just have a problem with compartmentalizing increased enforcement over to somewhere else, when it could be under the list of what you're trying to do.
Certainly.
So I just don't see why it would have to be separate.
All right. So I'll offer a motion that we request city staff to explore option three, manage parking, possibly with a paid parking element, and bring us more detail, more information on that.
I guess I'll second that amendment, or I'll second that, that motion with a slight amendment, just to elaborate on that. I think the, what I'm hearing us say is that we want a, a management plan that incorporates paid parking, increased enforcement, alternative access to parking, non-car options, and finally, a public-private partnership to, to explore those options. Am I not, am I, am I in track with everybody?
I think that is included in Councilmember Gold's motion.
Correct. Then I'll second that.
I have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. And...
Thank you.
With that, we have no closed sessions afterwards, so I will adjourn.